Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
So we'll do it by hand, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to take Jordan's hand.
We're going to take unanimous. Let's stand for the pledge. Aye.
(inaudible)
We're going to pledge unanimously. Let's stand for the pledge. Aye.
(inaudible) (inaudible) And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is public input one, is there anybody that would like to speak at public input one? Come on up. State your name for the camera, and please don't talk about individual people, and keep your comments discreet.
My name is Janice Ravi, and as I watched the video of the last board meeting, I was taken back on the misinformation that was given to the board regarding the two options for school start time. As I've stated in the past, our priorities should be safety first, academic second, and cost last when making decisions for our students. When presented with option one, which includes the addition of a six bus and keeping the times the same, the board was misinformed once again. The transportation committee that presented the original options voted on these two options, and it was a two to five vote. The majority was in favor of option two, moving the time back ten minutes and using only five Sad Harbor buses. At the original presentation of the transportation committee, the board was told this policy as well, and I corrected it at the meeting. The majority, including our transportation supervisor, was in favor of option number two. Why are we intentionally presenting wrong information to our board? We paid a lot of money for the research of our transportation practices, and in the report to the district, it was suggested that the later start time was costing the district a lot of money, and it was suggested to move the start time back to the original options. Option two is only ten minutes, not the twenty. When presenting the options two weeks ago, this was not portrayed to the board, instead it was presented as if the transportation consultant would be in favor of option number one. Again, why are we not portraying information correctly? Options one and two were presented the same cost savings. I'd like to know how this can be possible. Option one adds a security guard, and unless we're taking them from their posts in the school, which would lessen insecurity, this is an added cost. Adding a six bus and driver is also an added cost. The six bus driver would be able to drive one of our sports runs and alleviate subcontracting costs. How can these two plans cost the same? Option one was presented with the known fact that we need to retrain our kids and staff. Why are we entertaining this? We are dealing with mostly middle school age kids at the end of the school day. Safety is not a priority in this option number one. The idea of capturing more academic time does not express strongly enough. I would like to think that would have been, as it was discussed, as a priority in the presentation, as it's a challenge with kids and coaches missing academic support. We are in this current situation because two years ago, it was told to the board that we could run our own buses with a later start time, and there would be no financial impact. Of course, the board voted in favor of this, as this is their goal for later start times, and it would have no extra cost. This was misinformed to the board. As bus drivers, we knew we could never come back in time for the elementary pickup. Again, why are we giving misinformation? I would also like to know why the agenda item for superintendent search time was tabled, because there were missing board members. The transportation discussion is as important, if not more important. This research and conversation has been ongoing for over a year. It is an item that impacts students and taxpayers. All board members should have been given the opportunity to vote on this item. Why did we table one item and not the other? We hire outside consultants and have committees to present information and options to our board to help them make good decisions. How can we expect our board to make good educated decisions that affect our children and our taxpayers if they do not have the right information? Thank you.
Anybody else for public input one? Public input one? Okay. So we will move into the superintendent's report honoring retirees. I believe we're starting with Mr. Malone.
Is there elementary term?
Yeah.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, good evening everyone. It's my honor tonight to be able to speak about some of the esteemed members of our faculty who have reached the important milestone of retirement. I am going to start with Elizabeth Razor, who I spoke with this morning, actually. She regretfully was not able to attend tonight, but she wanted to thank the board for this honor, and we want to thank her for her years of service to the school district and the community. Elizabeth was an important part of our special education department and did a lot to help the children of Sad Harbor, so we thank her. I'd like to move on to Mrs. Polkingham, our school nurse. Margaret's been an amazing school nurse for a long time in Sad Harbor. She's done so much to ensure the health and safety of the children at the elementary school. Every day, she showed up at work ready to do her best, always with kindness in her heart and a lot of patience, which is definitely something that's necessary when you're working with the younger students. But Margaret went above and beyond what I think is sometimes expected of a school nurse. She really is a champion for health and wellness, and she did so much in our school to educate not just the children, but the adults of the school and of the community, such as some of her presentations at morning program. She helped with one of her colleagues start a before-school walking club, which eventually turned into Get Up and Get Going, just a great way to start the day, get kids and their parents active in the morning. So it's just an example of something Margaret is leaving our school during her years. I personally want to thank her, because as building principal, she was always such an ally for me when things would come up in the area of health, and always a great resource. I could go to her for questions, and she was always just great with her answers, kept things confidential, and a real friend and a good teammate. So Margaret, I wish you all the best with your husband Bill. I know you're heading up to New England, and I just know you have great things ahead, and all the best to you and your family. Congratulations. And next, Ms. Bobby Cohen. Bobby, congratulations on reaching retirement. As most of you know, Bobby has been a leader in our elementary school main office for a long time, and she's an important part of that team, and really an important part of the administrative team at the elementary school. She serves closely as the assistant to the assistant principal, Ms. Reynoso now, Ms. Denham before, myself, and others. Bobby also works closely with our guidance counselor. In addition to that, she serves and wears so many hats in the office, serving our transportation department, working on organizing after-school clubs, just a couple things to mention. Bobby also is one of the more intelligent people I've come across in my life. She's always been there as a great person to bounce ideas off. I've really enjoyed personally some of the later afternoons. Bobby often spends time at her desk after things get quiet, and I kind of like to do the same. Sometimes I make my way out into the office and just bounce ideas off Bobby, and she's always good with advice. It's always been great editing some of the letters that we send out, and I thank her for making us all look better with that. She has a real skill. But Bobby, above all of that, Bobby's just a loving, caring person, and has done so much for, of course, the children in the school, but all of us on the faculty and staff. And I just thank you, Bobby, for everything, and I wish you all the best. Happy retirement.
And we didn't mention diversity and inclusion.
And all those contract negotiations. I miss you so much.
Maybe not with contract negotiations.
Congratulations, Bobby. And last but not least, at the elementary school, Mrs. Rice, our music educator. Most notably, many know Mrs. Rice as the leader of the elementary band. But really, Lisa does everything in our music department. Of course, leads the band and introduces our young students to instruments for the first time, and instills in them a love of music, one that they take with them through middle school and high school. Lisa also works through our performing arts program, leads our large chorus, and pretty much whatever we need done in the music department, Lisa has always been willing to do that. Always brings a lot of energy every day, a lot of patience when kids are learning their instruments for the first time. These parents who have had that experience, and it takes a lot of patience. But Lisa's the one that really starts them off on the right track, and I know that they've continued that in the years to come. I've seen students that Lisa taught thirty-plus years ago that now are involved in music careers, and they attribute their start to Lisa. That's something to be really proud of, and as educators, that's something we can all hang our hats on. So Lisa, congratulations, thank you for everything, and we wish you all the best in retirement. Really happy for you.
Good evening, everybody. I also have a very important staff member retiring. His name's Matt McCary. Matt has worked for Sad Harbor School District for over thirty-two years. He started out as a custodian, and he's worked his way up to being a maintenance mechanic three. In my short time working here, I have gotten to know Matt as a very dedicated employee who will stop and lend a hand to whoever needs help. Matt is also active as a local volunteer fireman with the Sad Harbor Fire Department with over thirty-five years. We wish Matt a very happy retirement, and we will miss Matt's mechanical skills and good morning smiles. Good luck, Matt.
Yeah, thanks.
So I have two people to talk about. Good evening, everyone. The first person I can't beat here this evening, it's Nidal LaRosa, who's served as a TA now for nine years, I believe. Her father passed away this past week, so she has family out, but she wanted to come. And I'll just say that she's been an asset during her time at Pearson. She's been very, very helpful, specifically with assisting students in mathematics. But she also is very, very nurturing towards some of our students who really benefit from that kind of attention. So she will be missed, and I wish her the best. The second person I want to speak about is Toby Marionfeld, who is here. Toby came to Pearson, I believe, in two thousand and six? Two thousand and six. She had worked in the Southampton School District for a number of years. She's a graduate of Vanderbilt University, where she received her bachelor's in human development. She went on to earn a master's at Stony Brook. And when I was looking to recruit someone for the foreign language department, I had heard reviews about Toby's work in Southampton, so we were very, very lucky to have her come here. And she's really served as an unofficial leader during her entire tenure in Sad Harbor. But her good work is really not confined just to the classroom. I jotted some notes down, I looked at her personnel folder today, just to see some of the stuff that you've done, Toby. She's served as a master teacher, a class advisor for multiple levels, an IB extended essay mentor, high school robotics assistant, co-advisor to the high school newspaper, the high school literary magazine, and for many years, the National Honor Society advisor, and I'm sure I've missed a few. So she's really, really an entrenched part of our school community, and she's going to be missed. I've had the pleasure of watching her three children go through Pearson. Two of them, I believe, are going to be pursuing careers in education. And I know her husband Fred, they've just done a wonderful job as parents, and really Toby's just done a magnificent job here in Sad Harbor. So Toby, I wish you all the best, and I hope that the future brings you peace and prosperity.
Yeah, for all the retirees.
To all the retirees.
Also, a sort of a retiree, Susan Lomatini, this is her last board meeting.
On this side of the table.
And I would just like to say on a personal note, I've really enjoyed serving with you, because I literally can't think of a time that we didn't see completely eye to eye on any critical issue, and it's been nice to have an ally on the board. I think everybody on this side of the table definitely knows how many hours you've put in in the last three years, and I just want to thank you for serving and let you know that we appreciate you. Congratulations.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. No, I wanted, Toby left, but I wanted to just add an amendment. If people don't think that the kids care about when the teachers leave, when I told, both my sons have had Ms. Marionfeld as well as Ms. Rice, and they both said how nice Ms. Rice was, but my older son said, when I said, oh, she's retiring, and we're going to acknowledge her retirement tonight, my older son said, oh, my God, no, not Ms. Marionfeld. There's no way I will survive IB Spanish next year without her. If they think it doesn't matter, he's in a panic mode about her departure. All right, at this point, we'd like to move on to the Rudishan Trust Fund update.
Good evening. On behalf of the Donald Rudishan Educational Trust, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the trust and its activity. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Peter Soul. In addition to teaching at Pearson, I'm the coordinator of the Rudishan Trust. Because of time constraints, I would like to give you an overview of the trust mission using several particular activities and expenditures that illustrate what we do. And at the outset, I just want to say, in an effort to make this an interactive presentation, I have purposely misspelled some words in the slides, and all administrators and school board members will get extra credit if you find where they are. Unfortunately, though, I don't think any, we don't have any IB students here, because my theory of knowledge, students are always complaining about proofreading. And if they were here, they would give me a very hard time. So anyways, Rudishan Educational Trust. The Rudishan Trust was formed in August of two thousand by Hobart Betts in memory of his friend Donald Rudishan. It is the purpose of the trust to support visual art and architecture education in the Sad Harbor School District. The beneficiaries of the trust are the students of the Sad Harbor Union from schools. The trust supports art and architecture education in our schools by doing a number of different things. Creating art and architecture-related workshops and programs based on authentic experience and practice presented by professional artists and designers, not simply local artists and designers, but from New York City and as far away as Venice, Italy, and Barcelona in Spain. We provide support for educational travel. For instance, this year, we provided $12,600 in direct support for the Italy trip, and in addition, there were additional funds that were generated by a benefit art exhibition of work by professional artists and students created in a trust workshop. We provide for an annual scholarship in the amount of $10,000 for graduating senior continuing their education in visual arts and architecture. The scholarship is awarded based on an evaluation of student portfolio by Rudishan Trust visiting artists and designers. And very importantly, we provide material and equipment for both trust workshops and the school's curricular art program. And I think maybe almost most importantly, we create a series of collaborations that benefit not only the students in the school, but the school district itself with community groups and institutions, including the John Jermaine Library, the Sad Harbor Historic Society, the Sad Harbor Whaling Museum, the Julie Keyes Gallery, Long House Reserve, the Sad Harbor Partnership, and the Signet Foundation. What I'm going to do is, I'm just going to, we run, in the last several years, we've run over twenty workshops, both during the summer and during the school year. And I just want to highlight three of the workshops, instead of going through everything. And one is Pearson Fashion Workshops, and this is, that's our little Pearson Fashion Way out. I think very elegant and sophisticated. It's not one workshop, but the Pearson Fashion Workshops have been going on on almost a continual basis for now two and a half, maybe three years. Sculpture mask-making workshop, and the Catalan Experience painting workshop. And there's actually been three different painting workshops that are associated with the Catalan Experience that have taken place almost every other year for the last number of years. First with the fashion. Monica Frisbee is an award-winning designer, and she is a visiting artist for the fashion workshop, and she's sort of the driving force behind what we do. This is from last summer, some kids working on designs, you know, for different outfits. These were actually, many of these were actually constructed and were presented this spring at an exhibition, a public exhibition at the Julie Keyes Gallery. Then there's the idea of using recycled materials, and we would call them refurbished materials, to make bags and actually garments. And if you look at the picture on the left, you'll see some of the beach balls, and the beach balls were converted in that very attractive bag that's on the upper left. And you have like denim work in there, there are actually masks from sailboats, you know, and caution tape. And of course, the best place to get materials for fashion is the post office, so we have a little wallet made out of recycled post office stuff. And this is pretty incredible, and this is part of our IB program. Gabby Knapp, who's one of our seniors, in coordination with the children's museum, created a fashion workshop specifically geared towards elementary school kids and their parents. And this is part of Gabby, I guess it was Gabby's cast project. And it was pretty remarkable, because she did this with our support, but basically, she organized the whole thing. She did it on her own. And this is sort of a cool situation. If you look in the cute little kid, it was around Christmas time, I don't know if you can see it, but she's wearing a kind of festive Christmas thing on her head. That's Catherine Reed from Southampton, who we have come in and worked with all of our kids from high school down to elementary school. And the kids working and learning how to sew during the summer. And I can't really see too well, but in the lower right-hand corner, that's one of the students and their mom working side by side, making bags out of recycled material. And this was the culminating thing for about two years of the work that the kids had done, which was a fashion exhibition at the Julie Keyes Gallery in the American Hotel. And I have to commend Julie for being very, very supportive of the program and the school. This is some of the work that the kids produced, designs that they produced. We had to, because of the difficulty of actually putting these things together, we were able to get a seamstress who helped the kids actually construct the things. And this is our festive opening. You can see Jan packed. And over on the left-hand side, that's Emily Squires and Donna Karen. Now, I've been told that Donna Karen is a very famous fashion designer. Look at me, you realize I don't know too much about fashion. But Donna actually donated about $10,000 worth of materials, and all of the designs in the show were made out of the materials that Donna donated. And she says that she is going to join us during the summer, when we have our summer fashion workshop, and show the kids how to drape.
I had the opportunity to view the show, it was really nice. It was a really nice event.
It was excellent. The kids did a great job, and we, one of the things that Donna highlights is we get tremendous support from the community for the things that we do in the art program here. I'm not talking simply about the Rudishan Trust, I'm talking across the board. These are some of the bags hanging on the wall in the exhibition. And all of them are made essentially out of recycled stuff. And this is the best part of it all, is the parents coming and seeing the work product of their kids, all different ages. Emily, you know, elementary school, and the other kids in the pictures are middle school kids. And these are some of the, again, I wish that the lighting was better in here, but these are some of the garments that the kids created. The one that's on the right is absolutely spectacular, and the colors, of course, are much more vivid. And, you know, the reason I say the go-to guys is you have Gianna Exra and Phoebe Topping. These guys have been working with the fashion program since we started it, and they do remarkable work. They have diverse interests. Gianna is an extraordinary photographer, and Phoebe is, I think, a nationally-ranked equestrian, and sometimes has to fly off to some sort of horsey thing in different parts of the country. And the other thing is that they created this Instagram website, or site rather, called Trashin', which is essentially conceptual fashion design made out of garbage. And it's really wonderful for my room. If any of you have been to my room, you would know that there's a lot of garbage there already. But what happens is sometime I'll come back from being out of the room for like ten minutes, and they will have gone garbage hunting in the dumpster, and they will have brought things back to make designs from. Okay, now to mask-making, and this is Carla Macana in Venice, Italy. This is a picture that was taken on our Italy trip, and these are kids doing mask-making in Venice. And this is a place that we've been traveling to for probably almost twenty years. And this, these two pictures are pictures of Mario Bologna, who is the owner of Comic Keta, and also is one of the last traditional mask-makers in Venice. And we've known, I've got to know Mario pretty well, and for a number of years, we worked on this happening. This was bringing Mario to Pearson High School with his son Davi, so they could bond together. That was the reason we did that. And working with our kids, not simply, you know, introducing them to sculpture, and also to all the sequence of things you have to do to make masks, which is to work with the clay, then to make a mold out of plaster, and then to use special paper that we get from Germany to actually make these almost paper-machined kind of masks. And this is Mario on the left, showing him how to pour the plaster. And this is the interior of one of the molds, and it's really a beautiful thing in itself. And this is actually pretty funny. This is, we released the mask out of the mold, and that's David, you know, and I said, he's, actually, he didn't say Bravo, he said bravissimo, and he was very excited by the way it looked, and it was a really cool mask. And then another sequence of things is, there's a traditional way of painting these masks, and Mario was explaining to the kids what that was in the classroom. And these are some of the unfinished masks from the workshop. Another person that we have brought in to the school, and it's not simply the workshops he's done, but we've had other opportunities that were related to him, is Perico Pascoro, who is a very well-known Spanish artist from Barcelona, who now lives part of the year in Barcelona and part of the year in Montpellier in France. And not the last show we had, but the show before that was an exhibition at the Whaling Museum. And these are some of the work that the kids did, and you really can't capture it in the slide, but they're extraordinarily luminous. They're made on fine, beautiful Japanese paper with ink and watercolors. And this is pictures of the kids drawn with ink and Chinese brushes, and then using really, really fine watercolors to paint the ink drawings. And again, the technique is a specific technique that Perico has developed. And the other thing that the kids did in this particular workshop was do portraits of each other in ink with big brushes and stuff, and work in a way that they don't normally work. And then we had in 2018, an exhibition at the John Jermaine Library that highlighted the work. There's some of the portraits on the wall, and the stairwells were filled with these huge portraits, full-size portraits. And there are some of the kids that participated. And a very cool thing, between the first workshop we did with Perico and the second workshop, many of the kids that had done the workshop here were on the Spanish trip that we took at that time. And we actually went in Barcelona to visit Perico's studio. And it was sort of like a way of consummating the whole experience for the kids. The picture on the right, they're looking at a Bible that Perico, that was written in Catalan and that Perico illustrated. It's just a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful book, limited edition book. And the kids, for the kids that had done both things, it was really an extraordinary experience. Okay, Rudishan Trust Scholarship, this is from last year. These are our two scholarship winners, Lea Reed and Glenn Federico. This is Will Grossman, who won this year, this is a portion of his portfolio, 15 pieces of portfolio. He's going to the School of Visual Arts. This is part of Glenn's portfolio, he's going to purchase now. And, you know, wonderful work, wonderful photography. And especially love the picture on the lower right, that's Frankie, like the week before the Cacador closed. And this is Catalia's work, and she does, she draws beautifully, and she also does all kinds of things that are related to fashion and design. She's going to FIT. Okay, now, one of the other things we do is we support the curricular program. And one of the ways that we support the curricular program is that when we present student work, we use a large format printer that was donated, well, we have two of them, that were donated to the school by the trust. And the kids print their work on extraordinary, extraordinary paper that is not available to any other school that I know. You know, and this is, we're talking about as much as $10,000 worth of material that we get from the trust every year specifically for this purpose. Our town, which is a juryed exhibition of photography, was an exhibition that had advanced photography, student work that was done in the advanced photography class, and photography student work that was done in the photography class. And this was, again, another festive opening at the Whaling Museum. And this is a really interesting picture. On the left, you have Mrs. Dur and Mrs. James Merrill of the Signet Foundation, who supported some of the funding for this and also gave awards to the first and second place portfolio winners. And you have Hudson Galard Detroit and Grace Aran. And then you have Eric Fischel. Eric Fischel, for those who, I don't know if you know his reputation, is a world-renowned painter. He is somebody who's been extraordinarily supportive of the program and the school. He is the person, along with April Gornick, another extraordinary painter, who actually had the inception of having these Art Town Jury Shows every year. And, you know, so we have all of these people from the community that are actively supporting what we do. And that's, the guys on the left are some of my advanced photography class, that's about half the class. And there's some pictures from the show, and then some pictures that the kids, that were in the show, that the kids took. And I thought that this was really important. The gentleman who juried the show and made decisions about the portfolios is a gentleman named Ralph Gibson. Ralph Gibson is considered to be one of the great photographers working today. He is, lives in the vicinity of Sag Harbor, I'm not exactly sure where, but he is an extraordinary photographer. And he sent me this letter to share with the kids, and I just wanna read it to you. It says, "I want to send you my warmest congratulations to this year's award, this year's awards and exhibition. As I looked through the initial submissions, it became instantly apparent that the quality of the photographic intelligence was indeed quite high. Virtually all of the images express a visual curiosity and sophistication that speaks well for the future of the medium of photography. Many of the photographs were directly connected to the lives of photographers in a deeply personal way. I admire this form of image-making and want to encourage the pursuit of this direction in both teaching and making photography." And what I just wanna emphasize is what he says here about virtually all of the images express a visual curiosity and sophistication that speaks well for the future of the medium of photography. He's not talking about the future of the kids, he's talking about our kids having an impact on the art of photography. And that is a really profound statement, and it really expresses in a certain way what the Rudishan Trust and what our art program, both at the elementary school and the high school, is all about. And that's this, the bottom line. "The foundational belief of the Rudishan Educational Trust is that with the right experiences, guidance, and support, the young people of our community are capable of creating wonderful things, of making a kind of magic, of making the world a better and more beautiful place. They will be the artists and architects and builders of our future." That's what it's all about. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question before we begin? First of all, thank you very much. I've always been a big admirer of the program that you help. You bring so much of the value of the trust into this building and meeting of the building, and thank you so much for doing that. I know it's a big passion of yours, it's a great benefit. You have programs coming this summer, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, and usually they're, are they free?
We have, we're probably gonna be running, I'm actually working to get the information out to the community tomorrow.
Okay, great.
We're gonna probably be running 11 programs, they're all free. We're talking about, and the schedule will be coming out. Fashion, both for little kids and for middle school and high school kids. We're talking about stop-motion animation for both high school and middle school kids and little kids. We're talking about figure drawing, we're talking about filmmaking. Bringing Clarence Shepard over from the elementary school to do a two-week filmmaking thing. Middle school art, elementary school art, high school, high school stuff, a whole bunch. And we're trying to organize, and I don't know if we're gonna be able to pull it off now, or it will happen in the fall. But we're talking to several architects who are engaged with the folks who are trying to develop the courtyard to come up with a long-term plan for the development of the courtyard and use it as an educational experience for the kids. You know, learning about architecture and using our courtyard as a victim for that.
I have one more question. Several years ago, you came in front of the board with a project related to a bell, physical bell.
Yeah.
And installing it in a certain place on the property. And there was a lot of excitement and enthusiasm from the board and the community. Is there any, I mean, I just haven't heard anything about it, is there any update to that at all?
Well, the update is that we presented to the board. The kids went through a whole design process that included where should the bell go. It was a monument that was sort of like, looked like almost, you know, a beacon or something that would, you know, for returning ships.
Beautiful.
There was seating around it, the opportunity to create out of bronze or some other material, relief sculpture. And we have the woman who, young woman, wonderful artist, who did the bust of Steinbeck, and also the bust of Mrs. Sage, who could come down and do relief sculpture with the kids. Everybody was excited. We had, I thought we had the approval of the board, and I don't know what happened.
I thought, I thought we'd-
I mean, I really honestly, it's not meant as a criticism, I just don't know what happened. We have the plans, we're really excited, we're ready to go. I'm sure that when we show it to people in the community, there'll be 25 million people who disagree with where it's gonna be located, what it looks like, how you like it, everything you can imagine, but that's Sag Harbor.
So can I personally get on an agenda, upcoming agenda? Because I remember the board approving it, and then I remember a kind of radio silence, this was years ago.
Yeah.
So I'd love to see it back on the agenda so that we can, the board can get reeducated and we can reengage in that conversation, because it was really, I thought, very worthwhile, and so at the time, the board included it as well.
Well, anytime, you know, anything we can do, you know, and we're ready to go.
Great.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the foil request process. So I was asked to talk a little bit about the foil request process. And I'm sorry, it's not gonna be as exciting as Mr. Solow's. It's hard at all. So quickly, I start with a definition. A definition of foil, which is Freedom of Information Law, effective January 1st, '78, requires government bodies and agencies, including school districts, to allow public access to official documents and records. However, foil also allows districts to withhold access to certain categories of documentation, including those that are required by law to be kept confidential. So I described record, and then record officer, record access officer, who you contact, which is me. Here are some of the exceptions. Basically, the two I mostly deal with are the third and the fourth, which are records that if disclosed would constitute an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy, therefore some documents have to be redacted for personal information. And the fourth one, records that if disclosed would impair current or imminent contract awards or collective bargain negotiations. So with that, how do you submit a request? So you submit it in writing, either in person, by coming into the district clerk's office, by email, mail, or fax to the record access officer. It is acceptable, electronic requests for documents and to transmit records electronically if possible. That was amended in, I think, October 2016 to allow that electronic request. We do have foil forms on the website, on the district school website, but they are not required to be filled out. The email address up here, foilrequest@sagharberschools.org, is something that I asked Scott to create, and hopefully we can implement it in July, as of July 1st. Because I think, instead of getting it buried in the district clerk's emails, I think having a separate foil request address would be good. So hopefully we'll put that up on the website, and we'll start using that July 1st. And the addresses there to submit in, by mail. And also, sometimes people will fax them in, but they'll go to the general fax. But I like to get a dedicated line for the faxes to come directly to me if that's possible, I don't know. When submitting a fax, I mean, submitting a request, just make sure you give as much detail as possible, because our records are very broad usually. So if you can narrow in on the specifics, it'll, it can go a lot quicker. There are some fees associated. If you want the physical copies, they're 25 cents per page. And anything to, like if you need it in another form, if we can give it to you, and there's a cost to the district, you're responsible to pay for the cost. Steps. So once they come to me, there's very simple ones where it could take no time, like, hey, can I get a copy of the contract to whatever from last year? That's pretty quick and easy. Some things are more complex, they have to go to other departments. Things need to be, sometimes Scott has to run through some emails, or departments have to run reports. Once the reports are run, sometimes they need to be redacted for personal information, or information that does not apply to the specific request. So sometimes they're quicker than others. And sometimes they require consultation with maybe the school attorney or the superintendent. This is a request log that I created to keep track of how many were coming in. Just for example, this week, in the last seven days, I've had nine foil requests. Five of them were from one individual person with multiple requests on each paper, each form. So this is the timeline, we have, once we receive it, we have five business days to acknowledge the request. We have 20 business days to get the documents out, and if it's being denied, there's a process that'll take a little extra time. So basically, what I did is I brought in just a quick sample of different foil request types. So they're not only always just community numbers, although this week was nine of them. These are outside companies. So Smart Cure, for instance, they're quite elaborate, just to give you an example. We are submitting a foil request at Sag Harbor School for any and all purchasing records from 2013 to current. This was August of 2018. The request is limited to readily available records without physically opening, copying, or scanning paper documents. Specifically, information requested are purchase orders, purchase dates, line item details, line item quantity, line item price, vendor ID, name, address, contact person, email address. So they typically put in a request every couple of months for something along the lines of purchase orders for several years. Then we have council of administrators and supervisors, they're always looking for bargaining agreements and any addendums that come about. So there's a couple from them per year. And then here's one for salt suppliers. This requisition is for copies for any and all purchase orders, requisitions, and paid invoices for the 2016, 2017, 2017, 2018 calendar years, including any bulk liquid and/or bagged ice products purchased for treating parking lots. This request includes any liquid lot lots. So, I mean, it goes on and on about very specifically what they're looking for. So for example, this, I would have to send to Paul's department to pull out these documents. And then they have to go through, you know, whatever on that form, you know, the records that they run that pertain to the actual thing. Copies of annual safety reports conducted from 2009 to 2018. So there's a whole bunch of certificates that had to be, and once they're given in, then they have to be scanned and emailed. Same company, and then there's reporters. I would go through, but there's a ton of these. This is one foil request, and just to show you, it has six items on one request. So if I get nine in seven days, that's nine times six items. And then there are community members, and like I said, just in the last seven days, I've gotten nine multiple requests. So that's what I have for the process. I know it's very general, but each foil request seems to be different. They go to different departments, they search for different things, and then they come back and have to be either redacted, scanned, emailed, whatever.
Just for the general public, just say what redacted is, we take out-
I'm sorry, any personal information or anything that does not have to do with the request, we take out.
And to have a document redacted, does it first go to the attorney for the district, so they make the decision on what's redacted?
They'll make the decision, and then we redact it most, most of the time.
Right. Because we can't, we don't want, fiscally, we don't want-
It's cheaper for us to do it than to have the attorney do it.
Right, but you get the council of what needs to be redacted, and then you do the physical redaction. Right, I was just, I'm just bringing up so people who are aware that we do leverage an attorney to discern-
Yeah, I mean, a lot- Yeah, they, I mean, a lot goes to the count, you know, the attorneys, um, to make those decisions.
Which can be costly, cause you're asking for their hours.
There's a lot of back and forth.
Yeah.
Like, uh, the large one I showed you, it's all, all went to the attorney.
Out of curiosity, because just physically seeing the volume is, of just the handful that you've shown us is so jarring, um, are any of the things you're showing us, uh, documents that typically could be put on the district and therefore any link could be emailed back or whatever versus needing to actually send the document?
That would be hard, you're, you're talking about every document, every purchase order, every, you know, I don't think that we would be.
No, I, I'm not suggesting that everything you've mentioned, I'm just asking, as you're going through it, are, is it giving, giving us some ideas of, well, maybe we need to put more information online and there seems to be a theme where multiple people have asked for this and it's public, just to save the, you know, keep going back to the web.
Most of the easy ones would be like, hey, I need a contract from whatever, and sometimes we miss putting a contract on, but mostly board docs has mediated that problem.
Right.
So those type are good, but when these companies are asking for multiple things, it gets a little difficult. And what I'm showing you is just most of the correspondence you guys have seen via email or electronic documents, like this could have been like actually a stack of things. So this isn't really representative of.
Other questions from the board? I know that the board had been asking me about the, the process and, and that she had developed. Do you guys have any other questions about the process?
Well, I think the email's a good idea, um, the fax, if, if that can be worked out. I still think a form should be filled out to get these and they shouldn't come from email, but I know we've had that discussion or some people have talked about it. I think you should fill out a form like everywhere else, which would make your job easier, make the quester easier, but.
Legally, it's.
Well, we're gonna get an answer and I don't know.
I think we should have a form.
Mine's different on that, but yeah.
Well, you, you attorney, we did, we did ask the attorney, the attorney said that we had, we cannot require a form.
Right.
And that a request via email is a legitimate and legal way to foil.
As long as it's not, as long as it's in writing.
Yes.
It can't be verbally, that's the only, so.
Do we have questions?
Yeah, I sort of had a larger question, um, you know, I think you, since you've arrived, you've tried to address all the process issues as best as possible and as board, seems to me the process isn't the problem. One of the things that I thought is that when we moved to board docs that we would eliminate, and you've mentioned that some of these have been addressed through contracts, and yet there still seems to be an enormous demand for documents. And I'm not talking about some of the things that have been requested related to, you know, things that really don't have to do with the school business, it might have to do with a family issue and, you know, what have you. So that's, I, that's different.
Mm-hmm.
But where they are requesting, it seems to me legitimate documents, and so I guess my question is sort of the larger thing is that how can we ensure that those things are on board docs so that we reduce the, um, the burden on you and the district? Because we thought that that's what we were doing when we went with board docs and yet it seems like despite that, our, the foils have gone up and it's not.
And can I say, like, these things, like, um, are not things that I would think you could put on board docs, like how much we paid for salt, how much salt we, you know, but I think that more and more people realize that they can foil these things and it's, um, it's not just people who live here, it's companies, outside companies are foiling, you know, um, you know, somebody putting together something on, on how much all the principals make across Long Island, they're foiling. So I think as, as we go into the future, more and more people realize, oh, we can get this information easy, we just foil it. So I think the volume is getting more and more of the requests, not that this stuff isn't shareable.
But me and those watchdogs have been doing those, you know, what everybody makes for years, so that hasn't changed really.
I think people don't wanna look on board docs otherwise, you could say, hey, just send a one-line email and someone else is gonna do the work.
Yeah, but I see you respond.
I think Brian's right though, like.
That's what's going on, people are like, I'm not gonna look, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna send a valedictorian email for one line and not have to go look for it and she's gonna send me exactly what I want.
Like, see through New York, we've had for over a decade and you can, you can look that up, but it might be a year behind and so I.
Yeah, and I'm not speaking of salaries, I'm saying information wise, like could be on board docs to your point, but instead of searching through board docs, they're just.
But there's such random things that they're asking for.
But all the contracts are on, see, in New York.
Yeah, but even, yeah, but the, the challenge, I think, sometimes is, and this may just be a function of the structure of the website versus board docs, if you, if you go to the search on the website, your board docs, documents, most of the times don't appear on your search results. So if you go on the site and the search box and you put in a certain contract, it does not come up. You have to go into board docs and then search in board docs.
Right.
So it could be that there might be a more explicit way on the site, you know, you know.
To bypass board docs and just get the information from board doc.
Or, or be able to search board docs and they know, you know, that, you know, there's a, not in board docs, but there may be a link, but anyway, I would just think that, that when you do the search, I do searches on our site all the time and almost never get what I'm looking for and it's because, and then I'm like, of course, you have to go to board docs, most people wouldn't know to do that.
I know, and if they do go to the website, there is a link on the website to board docs, but yes, board docs gives up the information much easier.
But they, but they wouldn't, most people don't know that they have to do that.
Yeah, I don't know how to bypass that.
So, and how, how far back are the documents going in board docs? Like, if they want the contracts from the past three years?
We, we brought over everything.
A lot of the PDFs over that, that we've had.
So it goes back years?
Yeah.
So that, so the, it goes back.
It's not as easy to search, um, because they'll come up in groups where anything going from July, uh, when we started board docs, August last year to now is much easier than anything that we've added currently is much easier. So going forward, things will be a lot easier. But a lot of these things are nothing that I would think would be accessible through board docs, if they're just random. And yeah, sometimes they do take the shortcut and just ask me to get it.
But then, that's a question, so, but thinking of bigger picture, if you know that it's accessible via search on board docs, is it considered an acceptable thing? And I, I think I've seen you do that to let them know it's on board docs, but okay.
If, if the district has it out there on the website, you can just refer them to the website.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you, Victoria. All right, let's move into the administrative report.
Yes.
I'll be quick, uh, busy time of the year. I think we went over this at a previous board meeting, but AP and IB exams, uh, the sixth through the twenty-third, pops concert, orchestra concerts, we had a little break there, doctoral laureate for graduating seniors, which was the third, academic awards the sixth, prom was, we had the Greek church in Southampton, that was a success, and the six through twelve band concert on the eleventh. Last day of classes today, regents start tomorrow and run a little later than normal. High school graduation rehearsal on the twenty-sixth, that also is the morning that the seniors go to morning program and make an appearance there. And finally, um, graduation Saturday the twenty-ninth at five P.M. on the hill. Here are some pictures from the prom, the PTSA organized, uh, red carpet event, uh, that went for about an hour prior to the students boarding the bus. We had a hundred and sixty-two students attend the prom, so it was pretty well attended.
That was the cane queen that you just showed before, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we didn't know that till later, but yes. Academic awards, it was very, very hot in there.
Yes.
A list of the teeny awards, I think, Ms. Graves, were you?
So the winners are in red, but we got, um, huge nominations this year, which is an honor in and of itself, so what they have is this, um, uh, it's like, it's on the same night as the Tony Awards, they have the teeny awards and, um, it goes from, um, from West Hampton Beach all the way through the North Fork and the South Fork are nominations. They have kind of a secret society that goes out and watches all the plays and all the musicals and we had, as you can see, so many, um, recognitions and, uh, nominees. And in red are, uh, damn, uh, Graham Di Lorenzo and Riley Rose for Don't Drink the Water. Um, if you wanna keep going, I can go through the other ones. And they, our, our students performed on one of their acts on stage, this is on a Sunday afternoon, and they just crushed it, they were so good, as were all the other schools that performed. Um, we also won what they call the judge's choice award, there's only two judges' choice awards that are selected and that's where the entire musical is picked as supreme on the whole East End and that was Thirteen the Musical. I don't think SAG Harbor's ever won this, um, so, uh, the Thirteen the Musical was selected as a winner for this. We also were, um, picked for the, well, um, so we also had winners for outstanding performance in the musical and that was, um, uh, uh, Thomas Chivoni Jr. was selected. And that's him taking his award, he was hysterical, he was so funny and we'll keep going. And then for the Wedding Singer, um, you can see again, all of the tremendous nominations and we had supporting female in a musical and outstanding performer in a musical and that was, uh, uh, Thomas Chivoni Jr. got the outstanding performer and supporting female was Lola Lama and that's a pick from all of the, uh, those nominated on stage. And it, I would recommend, if you ever wanna have a great afternoon out, go to that, um, it's really worth everything. We also were put up for the Reese Ward, um, which is another set of nominations that is more, um, New York City centric and Nassau County and Riley Rose and Thomas Lawton were nominated for best actress and back to best, um, actor for The Wedding Singer. So they're just winning things all over the place. Okay, keep going.
This is just a picture of the valedictorian luncheon, Hannah Tuma's our valedictorian and we had a student win a Suffolk County Superintendent Scholarship and that's John Breugge to the right with his parents. It's me and Ms. Graves there as well, along with Christine Farrell, the English teacher.
And this was the Vow Sal Luncheon, um, which was the same day as the prom, so we lost our valedictorian, but our salutatorian came, so that was just wonderful and Senator LeValle and Assemblyman Theo gave some really great advice to our valedictorians and salutatorians from, um, the East End of Long Island, it was just wonderful. So that's Emily Hallock, our salutatorian, um, they were giving, gave each of the students proclamations so that their name will always, if you Google their name for years to come, it'll be on the state capitol as a proclamation.
Yes, Carrie Erle, any questions?
Okay, but before you go, I was hearing something about an issue with the, um, last SAT and some scandal about the answers being, I mean, the national thing.
Yeah, not, not as it pertains to us.
Oh, okay, I know that's what I should know, okay.
I mean, an update on that front, we are, um, we put in an application to host the SAT on the twenty-fourth of August for the first time. We've been, we've received tentative approval to do that. What we're debating right now is whether to accept that approval because of some costs associated with a site advisor and some work that has to be done, because if you agree to be a SAT site host, you're accepting students from all over the region, um, and you have to do a lot of supervision related to that, so we'll be talking to the superintendent about that, but hopefully we can pull it off. Because if we don't offer it in August, the only available site, I think Mr. Guy and I spoke today, is in Connecticut, correct?
Yes.
There aren't even seats in Manhattan.
Yeah.
Oh, for juniors.
It's, it's, August is a new time for them to offer it and it's very popular and more popular than even they anticipated.
Oh, wow. And what about for kids who'll need to take it and won't be around in August, which is typical.
Well, they have, they have, they have.
They have the fall administrations.
Oh, but out on Long Island or they'll have to, oh, okay, okay.
It's Hampton, yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
This was just something we wanted to add, so.
Cause never, we've never hosted it since.
All right, I'll go quick, um, we had our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade trips, eighth grade went to DC, sixth grade went to Frost Valley, um, and seventh grade went to Boston, you'll see pics of those. Our two concerts, the six through twelve orchestra concert, as well as the band concert, Mr. Renton and Mr. Vegeta, and then Ms. McCabe took our science eight students to Rookhaven Lab, which was awesome, so they got to do field study and she's very involved in that. Um, during her undergraduate, she studied, um, I believe in the Bahamas and has a research paper that's actually, um, published. And then our science eight exam, because of our living environment waiver, we only had under ten students, I believe only six students take the exam, so we're rethinking that just because of the op-dots and how it looks for our grade eight cohort. Last day of classes was today, I did it by regences and finals just because the middle school's a different type of, um, breed when it comes to our regents and final schedule. So we have the living environment regents tomorrow, as well as our science eight final. And then Tuesday is our algebra regents for our eighth grade students taking that, of course. The sixth and seventh grade ELA and science final will be Wednesday and then Friday they have the sixth and seventh grade math and social studies final. Our eighth grade moving up ceremony, which is exciting, they practiced today, they are stellar at standing up and sitting down on cue. That is on Thursday, you can come, it will be in the auditorium, it is air conditioned, so we did, once the new construction happened, I think this is our third or fourth year now, and, which makes it smoother and also eighth graders sitting still for over an hour is just not fun if they're not comfortable. And the checkpoint A exams for French and Spanish, this can be confusing for parents, so we break up Spanish into Spanish one A and one B, so after one B they take it, same as French, so our seventh graders are taking the Spanish exam and because our seventh graders start French, they will be, our eighth graders will be taking the checkpoint A exam. And then the last day for teachers is the twenty-sixth.
Wait, I'm sorry, so if you're a seventh grader taking French, you don't take that exam until the eighth grade?
Exactly, that's why I wanted to clarify, I've had a lot of emails about that. So this was lunch today, it kind of stayed okay for the day, which was great. Um, our cafeteria staff and custodial staff, as well as our, our PTSA did a great job, um, celebrating the last day of school for our kids. Uh, lunch with, the food was free, but the drinks were not, as well as the ice cream, so the kids got to enjoy. But, yeah, so Mr. Terry during, and Ms. Masters during Friday, I didn't put this, they made carpetball tables, so those are what the kids actually mathematically constructed and then they created them on Friday and that's him playing with the kids during lunch, because Mr. Terry's a big kid. And then this is the Frost Valley trip, Mr. Rain, this was our first year doing it, we think we're gonna continue doing it, we thought it was a really good bonding experience for our sixth grade students and they have no cell phone access unless in, in the cafeteria, sorry, we can't control everything, but that was good. And then this is Frost Valley again, one of, I think, I think it's Stephen Blondini closing, like a champ, and then the mess hall. And then our seventh grade Boston trip, um, the good part about seventh grade social studies, it correlates with what they're studying in Boston, so it's a good trip cause they can see what they're actually studying. I couldn't airdrop the DC trips in time, so now I'm going to get Mr. Malone.
A few, few past events, there's been a lot, a lot going on, we had a Great Spring Concert, it was actually Mrs. Rice's last concert, so at the very end, her parents gave a nice tribute to her and the kids, of course, as well. The kindergarten show was the, um, seventh, June seventh, and actually, uh, I have a few pictures of that, but that morning, the collegiate baseball team visited morning program and it's always a nice, um, nice way to show that community connection between the school and what they're doing this summer to support that college baseball need. Mr. Solow was talking about the Rootishan Trust and one of the ongoing projects, I think this could be, um, fifteen years probably since, back when I was teaching in fourth grade, we did this, um, the photography exhibit, our fourth graders worked closely with a professional photographer, me and Clarence Shepherd, and then they put together an exhibit and it actually opened at John Jermaine Library and it'll be on display for, for a few weeks and they, the kids do a great job, they tour around the village and, and take, um, beautiful photographs and then write some poetry to accompany that. Our kind of, kindergarten visitation day was this past Friday, um, successful event, we have a, have a robust kindergarten class this year, um, for whatever reason, our numbers are up in kindergarten, um, so we, we actu, at visitation, we actually had, um, sixty students, which is very high for us, for visitation, because we always receive some students in the summer. But the teachers did a great job, the children had a ch, chance to visit the classrooms, meet the teachers and, and tour the building, I think it was very successful. And our PTA, um, right up until the last hour, they're putting on a great event for families, they did a bingo night on Friday night and that was a success. There's some shots from the kindergarten show, they, they presented creature feature, each of the classes studied, um, animals and the environment, we have some, some chicks, bees, they, one class was talking about the importance of bees on the environment. And actually on the, on the upper left, I think that's the turtle, Mrs. Landy's class did, um, a presentation all about, um, protecting turtles, for example, when you see a turtle crossing the road, stop the car and try to help it, go in the same direction. But what was interesting is, I think it's the South Fork Turtle, um, Turtle Preservation Group, they, um, got ahold of the clip of the kindergarten children leading all the adults in a pledge to protect turtles and. And apparently, it started to go viral. And pretty, pretty cute. This, this was a special day. We, we actually, this year, for first time that I can remember, we, we had a student participate in Special Olympics. And Coach Shelley Cottrell worked with second grader Shane Hartstein, Shane Hulk Hartstein. He loves The Incredible Hulk. But he, he worked for about two months with Coach Cottrell on the dance. He did the hundred meter dash, as well as a softball toss, which is like a shot put toss. And then he participated last Saturday at the Hampton Bins High School. Did a great job. Really, really did St. Harbor proud. And a lot of teachers and community members came to support Shane. We're really proud of him. Oh, here's some, some of the photographs. They did a great job. So a shot, I mentioned this a while ago, but Fred Thiel visited. Sabrina McManus, one of our fifth graders, did a great project about environmental preservation. And Fred came in to present her with a certificate, which was very nice. Another art project from Mr. Osborne's fourth graders. They won a prize at the Long House Show last week. And a lot of upcoming events, I guess, just heading in tomorrow. We're hoping the weather cooperates for Field Day. If not, we're going to bump it to, to Wednesday. Our big fifth grade celebration is this coming Friday, and we're looking forward to that. And then as we wrap up next week, we have our Moving Up Day on Monday, the 24th. That day starts our earlier dismissals. Monday will be a 12:50 dismissal. And then Tuesday, we do Beach Day, take, take the school down to Long Beach for, for some fun. Again, 12:50 dismissal. And then the last day, Mr. Nichols mentioned the seniors at morning program. And then we say goodbye with a, actually an early 10 o'clock dismissal on Wednesday, the 26th. But it's been, it's been a great year, a lot, a lot of fun, a lot of good things happening in the building.
Good evening, gentlemen. All right, we had four new hand dryers installed, two in the high school gym restrooms and two in the snake hallway restrooms. These hand dryers should reduce the amount of paper products we use in the district. This is something I plan on doing every year, by putting a couple in every bathroom. My long-term plans is to reduce the amount of paper we use. All the exterior entrance floor mats are being replaced. The current mats are beyond their useful life and are becoming a tripping hazard. Also, one of the cafeteria air conditioning unit vents has started really giving us a lot of problems and needs replacement. So we're currently getting estimates to see if it's worth replacing it or putting money to, to repair it. Elementary school. I know there's an ongoing tick issue over there, so we have contacted Jackson Dogs and Company to apply an organic tick control to the elementary school property. Because we're not allowed to use pesticides, this application will consist of cedar, rosemary, and peppermint oils. I hope to have this applied after school hours as soon as possible, which I think one day this week they're planning on doing it, weather permitting. Also, the other news that's been in the news media a lot lately is the community concerns with the mercury in the gym floor. So after some recent community concerns, we are having J.C. Broderick and Associates test out elementary school gym floor surface for mercury vapor. This test was scheduled, actually was scheduled for this afternoon, which I went over there with the, the guy. And he said that we have no problems, that it was zero percent of mercury vapor in our gym. In fact, Mr. Malone was over there with me, so we're all good with that. All three building elevator floor surfaces are being replaced with a new one-piece vinyl that's designed for high-traffic areas. You look at every one of our elevator floors, the tiles are popping up, they're cracked, so they, they need to be replaced. Coming a tripping hazard, so that's something I'm working on. Also, over the summer, we have several projects taking place, which include installing new heating pipes in two of our snake hallway restrooms. Right now, they have no heat. How and why, I don't know, but some, um, heating, the heating controls in the middle school restrooms are out of control. There's no way to regulate the heat. It's either full blast on or off. So that's also something I'm working on. Installing new floor tile and store treads in the locker room stairwells. Those are another issue where they crack and coming up and presenting a tripping hazard. Also updating the oil tank fill cover at the elementary school. That's something that has to be done because we were sighted on it and there's water getting into the top of the, of the oil tank, which is not, not a good idea. So they're going to come in and install a new tank cover. I hope to have that started right after school's out. The other thing was, we're potentially trying to get pavers installed in the lower school courtyard. I know that's something that we've been, we've wanted to try to do in the past, but was unable to get done. So I know the kids want to go out and use that area at lunchtime, so it'd be nice if we can get that done. I'm, I'm pushing to get it done, but I talked to several vendors in the area and they, they were pretty booked up for the summer. So it's going to be a little tough to get them here, but I'm going to try really hard. This is a little, my work is that my staff here. As the school year concludes, I would like to acknowledge that the custodial grounds and maintenance staff of both our buildings, they have been extremely busy in doing a wonderful job of coordinating and executing all the numerous concerts, award presentation, and gym activities while still keeping the building clean and safe for our students and staff. They've really been working very hard. I'm only here about six months and they're, they're right on everything that I asked them to do. And they're already one step before, before I even say something. So I really, you know, give a nice shout out to them.
Do you have a question? Thank you very much. It was really informative. The ticks in the elementary school, how did you discover that was a problem? Are kids coming in from, from playing out there with ticks on them or?
I know Mr. Malone had, had reached out to me last week about a couple of the kids went home. I guess their parents found ticks on them.
Okay.
And Mrs. Graves emailed me.
Yeah, we don't know if it's coming from school or if it's coming from at home. But if parents are worried, we're worried. So we know ticks really come from high growth, not from low growth. But, you know, parents are worried, so we, we wanted to be responsive. So, you know, I said, what can we, what do we have that, that can be used as a school district? So we're using what some of our, what some of the companies are using out here that is organic in nature.
Just be proactive about it. And if, if it works, we'll, we'll do it every, every six, eight weeks, you know, during the, this time of year.
Yeah, but we have, I've had like three parents reach out to me and, or to Matt and said that they were concerned. They came home, their child had a tick on them. Could it have been at school or could it have been somewhere in between? We don't know. But if we can be responsive, we're going to be, so.
So I had a different question.
Sure.
It was about the oil tank fill cover, which is this the same oil tank that was filled just literally in that last bond where they did that work, remember, in the elementary school property?
I don't believe so because they, that area has all new concrete, but around the oil tank. There's one section around the cover is older concrete, so I don't know when that was done.
Because I could have sworn there was an oil tank. Remember, they discovered it when they did the construction over there in that last bond?
We removed an oil tank that was old.
And then I thought there was a thing that had to be filled.
Yeah, that was, that was, they found an oil tank. They found an oil tank that was from like the 1940s.
Wasn't it buried?
Yeah, that was buried.
Right, they had it abandoned and fill it.
Yeah, that was removed.
So that's what I'm asking, is this the same one?
No, totally different. This is the oil tank that supplies the building.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
And it has to, it gets tested and checked every six months.
Okay. I was just curious, if it was the same one, I was going to say, wow, that was pretty sudden.
No.
No, there has to be, what it is, is that the cover that is on there only has one access hole. And, and when it gets inspected, they have to see the whole top of the tank and they can't see that through that one hole. So the new tank cover has two holes in it. It's also, it's a better design. It's a fiberglass lid instead of metal lid. So the gasket will seal the water out of it, which is what we're having a problem with. We're getting water into it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Past events for the athletics. On six-three, we had physicals. We had about fifty-six kids from next year's seventh grade all the way up to next year's twelfth grade. And obviously, we had a very successful run with our baseball team this spring. They won the Southeastern Regional Championship when they defeated a very good team from upstate Tocco. And then we moved on to another day of sports physicals. The eighth grade was on the trip, or the seventh grade was on the trip for the first round. So second time we saw a little bit of an influx. We were closer to sixty. So we got a hundred, over a hundred kids through. On six thirteen, we had our end of the year athletic awards ceremony. On six fourteen, we traveled up to Binghamton and played a baseball semifinal where we lost five to two. I thought our team battled really hard. We played an excellent team that ended up going to the final game and losing. But all in all, it was a very successful run for our baseball team. We have some pictures here of, that's Matt Hall pitching on the mound. And that's Mrs. Graves Cadillac with the seniors and the captains in it. And Gavin Manu from the Seg Harbor Express interviewing our senior shortstop Cooper Scipone. And some more athletics pictures from the baseball run. And it's lagging over here. There we go. Upcoming events. Really what we're doing right now is, as we're winding down school, we're preparing for September. Registration for Family ID and Fall Sports will be open on July 19th. The schedules lock, from my end, the schedules that you see on Section 11 still have a tendency to move. We are still trying to get some non-league games. I can't make switches after July 1st, so I'm off the like. So anything, anytime you go on there after July 1st, it should be pretty much locked in. I can add additional games, but league matchups will be set. On August 19th will be the first day of practice for our varsity, JV and varsity football. We have a strong showing. We had the football coaches from Southampton come over the other day. We had a very nice sign up. We've been working for the last probably month trying to get a gauge on exactly what students are participating in next year at all levels. This is kind of like a three-pronged attack. I have them meet with their coaches. They've been holding a series of coaches meetings. I also go down into the lunchrooms and, and go see what everybody's intentions are. And then I also attended the physicals where they're at the physicals. I can tell, I can ask them what they're signing up for. First day, the big first day of practice for high school sports, JV and varsity, will be on the 26th. And then on September 4th, we have it listed as first date of practice. We will hold our annual middle school, middle school informational meeting as, in lieu of practice on that first day. And that will be held in the auditorium at six o'clock. And I think we're ready for Mr. Fisher.
Good evening. I want to mention a few things quickly. In terms of communications, obviously, we're posting things to the website and social media on a regular basis at this point. Most recently, we put information about the pre-pronged athletics award. But the reason I actually included this is because I wanted to point out that with the new website and the new tools and order levels, it's much easier to get information quickly, real-time, permanent, while it's happening. So for example, you know, if someone took a picture at one of these events, it can immediately be posted. It doesn't have to be sent off to somebody else. So we have certain people that have the ability to do that. And I think that's improving our ability to get information out in a timely fashion. As far as the two-way radios go, we've been talking about this for quite some time. We're making some progress now. I've been working with Mr. Wilken and the folks from the vendor that's providing the radios. We met with them last week and we identified how we want the radios to be rolled out in terms of channels and access and things of that nature. I'm hoping that the rooftop antenna will be installed this week or next week. And we'll follow up with the rollout of the radios. In terms of the security and the new video system, unfortunately, we're still waiting for the durable cases for the iPads to come in. They're on back order. Fortunately, at this point, it looks like probably not going to get those out before the end of the school year unless they come in, you know, within the next couple of days. But I checked with the vendor today and they still have backward. That's okay. We'll be ready to go for the start of the school year. We'll have an opportunity to go put a work with the security personnel over the summer prior to the start of school, so it's fresh in their mind anyway, you know, what, what the system can do for them. So we'll be good to go for, for the new school year. Continuing to work to getting the learning center up and running. We have some drawings that had to be changed by the architect. Once we get those back out to the vendors, we hope to have our proposals and we'll be moving forward. Every indication that we're still on schedule, so nothing is holding us up at this point or preventing us from the original timeline, which is good news. But that's going to take up a, a good deal of time this summer trying to get that organized and, and set up. And as always, we have our end of the year, you know, while we're winding down with one, we're simultaneously getting prepared for new school year and the work that has to happen over the summer to have schools ready. When we open this year, unlike past years, we're actually not bringing on student workers this year. We're going to handle the work. My staff should be able to take on the work because of the type of work it is and what we're purchasing. We actually don't need to have student workers assist us this year, so we'll see how that goes. We may have to revisit that in the future. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, members of board, superintendents, colleagues, members of the community. Walking through the business department, what we've been up to. I want to do a shout out for our audit committee. They've been very busy. All volunteers, several members of our board. And they convened to review all the received proposals that we obtained from three proposers. After reviewing the materials, the three auditing firms came out and presented to the audit committee. And subsequent to that, they met and through their deliberations, they've selected a new internal auditor, which will be announced later on tonight by resolution. Also, the entire business department worked closely with both finance manager and Eastern Suffolkosse in the conversion and training of our new accounting software entitled Envision. We're still working out a few issues, but the system is performing well and will enable us to roll over the newly approved budget and implement the 2019, 2020 budget with new purchase orders virtually. Our external auditors have commenced their pre-audit with us this past week. They've been interviewing staff members, assessing our procedures, reviewing everything from timesheets to paid invoices, bank reconciliations, to ensure everything is being done properly and in accordance with the guidelines issued by the New York State Controllers Office. They will be back and forth all summer, completing their audit in September. And they will provide a final management letter of any findings to the board. They are also following up to ensure that we have complied with all of the findings from last year's audit and the corrective action plan that we wrote as approved by them, the New York State Department of Education, and again, the New York State Controllers Office. So there's more to follow there. Now, New York State recently, it was actually April 1st, approved legislation for school districts to create and fund a Teachers Retirement Contribution Reserve Subfund with the 2020 fiscal budget. And our board would be required to pass a resolution authorizing the establishment of this reserve fund for the purpose of financing retirement contributions for employees in the teachers' retirement system. Now, we currently have such a fund in place for the employees' retirement system. All of the staff that are not teachers or administrators. Once this reserve is established, a district can pay a maximum of two percent of the total compensation of all its teachers into that subfund annually. But at no point can the total of the subfund exceed ten percent of the compensation of all the district teachers. Now, we've drafted such a resolution that was reviewed by our school attorney and I submitted it to the board to be acted upon at this meeting. The district and in particular, the business department would like to thank the entire community for its support of the recently approved 2019, 2020 budget. We all worked diligently to ensure complete transparency throughout the entire process. Now, all PowerPoint presentations, the- Now, all PowerPoint presentations, the budget statement and the budget in detail can be found on our website. We will continue to follow this process with future budgets. We continue to strive to purchase the very best goods and services at the lowest prices that we can find with the most responsible vendors that we can find and that, those that are attentive to our needs. We out here on these stats. So, one of the things that we say in the business department, we're always watching our Ps and Qs for price and quality.
Questions for Dr. Kent? I just have one question. If you go back to page, slide one oh one.
Sure.
Establishing the reserve fund. Do we even estimate about what our costs, the contributions the district will need to make in the next five years? So, I know that it can swing based on the market and, you know, so those numbers can swing, but generally speaking, do we have projections so we know what that requirement, you know, range of that requirement will be to give us, to inform us about funding that?
We do not. We have, we do know that with the two percent that I have as a separate resolution tonight recommending that we can, we can put up to three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in there, which is the two percent, three, six and change. For the variable, the two big variables on this and why we established an employee retirement fund years back, it's twofold. One, from year to year, we never know what the percentage increase will be from the state.
Right.
Like this year was the lowest. The year before, it was up, it was quite considerable.
Right.
And then the second piece to it is that we don't know how many employees will retire. And we have to make sure that we have enough money to fund those retirees. So, so based on those two factors, we can put up to a maximum amount in, which is the two percent every year. And also, it's also based on how much money we have left at the end of each respective year. We want to maintain our four percent regular fund balance. And then we also want to look at all the other reserves and just take a look at our overall plan and make sure that those reserves are properly funded for future things that we, as a community and board, might want to do. The capital reserve, the repair reserve, the bus reserve. So, we'll want to look at all that as a whole, as an aggregate.
But, no, I understand that at the end of the year, when you have extra money, you could use it for that. You might also say, okay, it's worth having the SATs here in August. Let's fund that. Or there are other options that are not fund-related. I just didn't know if we were analytical and looking back and said, hey, the past ten years, this is the average that we had to contribute and this is the average that it went up. So, based on that, you know, we could, we could fund it up to this max, but let's fund it less than that because we don't anticipate. I just didn't know if we had done any of that homework. Or we're just looking at it and saying, oh, let's put up to the max in there and just move forward.
Well, so to answer that, that's a really great question. To respond to that, I guess there, again, there are three points that I can think of right off the top of my head. One, first and foremost, we don't, we're right in the middle of the audit and we don't know, and we're still paying bills. So, we'll be paying bills and still issuing purchase orders through the end of this month. So, even though the month, June thirtieth ends and the new fiscal year of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty starts, we still have bills and obligations from this current year for services and products that may not have been rendered or delivered yet. And those bills to pay. So, part of what we'll be doing in our wrap-up and with our final audit will be exactly how much money is left.
And our auditors close up our books for us.
Correct.
That is correct.
And when the auditors close up our books, any funds that we have need to go into the four percent or into a reserve.
That's correct.
We don't, we can't carry over those funds. They have to be into a planned reserve, which the controller tells us. The board has to, that's why we have those resolutions current year, the auditors and our controllers say they have to go into district, either the four percent gets fully funded and then if there's anything else, it has to go into reserves. We can't like start writing checks right now. It has to go into a reserve. So, the TRS is a brand-new reserve that hopefully will help stabilize school districts because one year it might go up to eight percent, another year it might just be two percent. And with us being under the burden of a two percent tax cap, which could be even in the negative. I mean, school districts have seen tax caps that are negative and that they aren't two percent, they're in the negative. So, something like the TRS going up can really, really harm a district. So, that's why we advocated that we have a TRS reserve, so.
Do we anticipate having money for that this year?
There will be money, but it, it really depends on how much. And as Superintendent Graves mentioned, we want to fund the four percent first. And then the money that's left, I think that we as a board need to look at all of the reserves that we have and where we might need money. For example, I know that one of the reserves that, there's a resolution on the table for tonight is to increase, a recommendation of increasing the workers' comp reserve. And that's based on a meeting that I just attended last week with the number of claimants and the number of potential liability in terms of dollars is out there versus what we have in our fund. We may want to really look at, at taking that resolution and increasing it tonight so that we'll have adequate money there. And then that fund will be okay for a while. So, the second, but the second point that I wanted of three was that in a look back, and you had mentioned, well, has there been a look back? Yeah. We've been averaging around a little over fourteen percent per year as an average with TRS contributions. This year is an anomaly at ten point eighty-three. I don't know that we'll have that happen again. So, we budgeted for it and we budgeted for next year. So, looking forward, we don't know what those increases will be. It's been really a wild ride on the barometer readings. So, this type of a fund will give us the security that we need to put money in. And the reason that I recommended putting the full two percent in or three eighty-six, we don't have to put that much in, but if we have a resolution that says we can put that much in, this way, if we need it, the resolution's in place. If you decide to put no money in, or fifty thousand, or a hundred thousand, you're still within the three eighty-six.
They, you won't be making decisions on that amount until the auditors have closed your, the books, right? So, segregation of duties, they close up our books for us. They're gonna, they're gonna be the ones that close the books up. And they'll do that and have a report for you in September, October. And that's when the board will make the decision on how much you're going to put in those, in those various reserves. All we're doing is basically making a placeholder during the current year, which is what the auditor recommends.
Do we have an estimate as to what the surplus is going to be?
Not yet.
It's not, it's not.
Because we're still paying bills.
We have to have some idea, no?
Right.
Well, I know, I know that we, I get a weekly report that tells me it's our cash flow, what's available, what's encumbered, what's been spent, and then what the budget was. We, we're still, we're still paying quite a bit of expenses right now. And money that's encumbered, which, which means we, we think we're going to spend it, we may not be. So, we, we still have a couple more weeks to work through the end of the year.
So, we're not going to know till September is what I'm hearing.
We'll have a good idea over the summer, but officially, the auditors will want to tell you when they're done.
It's against segregation of duties. We're supposed to.
I understand, but I mean, are we talking like a hundred thousand, a million? Like, we should have some general idea.
It won't be, I don't think it'll be a million. Which, we're supposed to be left with a minimum of two percent of our, our budget. We're probably going to be at three, four, or five percent, you know, of our budget.
Well, that's more than a million, then.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be two percent. Well, no, that's our, but our fund balance is what we're supposed to have. So, we haven't touched our fund balance. So, that's good, you know? So, then it's whatever else we have left, so.
A good rule of thumb with our budget, like the new budget, roughly, it's a little over forty-two million. So, every four hundred and twenty thousand dollars is one percent of the budget. That, that's a, or even if you round it, every four hundred thousand dollars is approximately one percent of the budget.
So, we have up to five, that's two, over two million or over a million.
Yeah, right.
It's two million.
So, I'm to go up to, yeah.
Five percent is over two million. One more question that, I understand that at the end of the year, when we have extra, if we have extra money, it needs to go to a fund. But during the course of the year, if we anticipate we have extra money, we can move it from one line item to another to spend it in a different way if we choose, correct?
Yes.
And I'm only asking because again, like tonight, we heard about the SAT, that I think if we are looking at a surplus, I, I get a little frustrated that, and I, and I, I really respect that we want to make sure that our reserves are funded properly, but also, you know, we can have years where we have extra surplus. And I think that before we, it's too late, because at the end of the year, then it becomes too late. You can't transfer those funds in the next school year, right? It has to be done during that school year, right?
That's correct.
So, the clock runs out. This is our last board meeting. The clock runs out tonight for us to say, okay, if we had, let's just take twenty thousand out of that two million dollars or whatever, and let's make sure we fund these three things. And that, I just feel like that conversation we should have in May and June, if we have a surplus. Are there a few low-hanging food that aren't really expensive but could make a difference? To me, that, it's a worthwhile conversation to have before we can't have it. And after tonight, we really can't have it, right?
Well, you could certainly have that conversation tonight and.
Well, wait, wait.
No, no, I'm not saying we have, have it tonight. I'm saying that it makes sense to have it going forward if there's low-hanging food that's not that expensive because it, we're going to be rolling over a bit of money.
So, I won't be here and have this conversation next year, but those conversations, if there's funds left, which I think we did have that conversation about funds we could spend towards Stella and our some things that we wanted, that you really should have those conversations in more March and April because if you start spending money this time of year, the auditors get really mad because it looks like you're spending down and you're not following your, your, your school budget. You really should be staying as close to your aligned school budget as possible or your auditors get pretty mad if you start sending money to different budget lines without, without, you really should be keeping to the fiscal plan that you show to your, your, your school districts, so. And if you just start throwing money around, they don't like that. So, if you're going to make any, you know, but you're right, if there's funds left over or funds that, let's say we budgeted for some special education programming and those children moved away. And now you do, you know, like in March, then you can have open discussion about that and about what, you know, another way you could, that you don't want to see that going to reserves, that you want to take that, transfer it. You really should have those conversations in about March or April.
Or we want to, we want to, we want to raise, we want to have taxes that are not quite as high and apply it towards.
We could apply it towards the budget.
Exactly.
Right, right. So, but don't have it in, in May or June because the auditors get really upset with that.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Kent?
Can I ask a point of information question that actually is relevant to one of the accident items? Because I guess I had misread this. So, the, and I'd asked, this, we pulled from consent into action, one of the things I'd asked to be pulled, was the deposit for the facilities capital reserve fund. So, that amount in there is not the amount that we are depositing, it's just a placeholder approval.
Correct.
So, going back to Brian's question, you know, since we're placeholdering up to five hundred thousand, you don't have any sense of what that might look like, what that deposit looks like? Because we're just, we're being asked to approve.
Where do you get five hundred?
Yeah, exactly. I'm curious.
At this point in time, I would be speculating and I wouldn't want to give you a number that may not be genuine. I, I really would rather not do that.
Because, I mean, all right, so I guess.
So, Treasurer was trying to give a high, a high number, or Treasurer generated those, those numbers. She was just trying to give up to, an up to number, a placeholder.
All right, so, all right, so I'm going to hold the rest of my comments until we get to that point. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the administrator? Mr. Administrator? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, the communication part, we're going to wait until it's down to break.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items six one through six twenty-four? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I guess there's no consent. We'll just wait for it to come out.
Can I ask a point of clarification? I thought, unless I'm remembering it incorrectly, was it, I can't scroll this now, it's, it's raising on you. The, there was one thing we were being asked to approve that had to do with special, a special education report that wasn't there as of this morning. Was that moved to action?
Yes, they did. It was the first one accepted.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Can I get the motion to approve action items seven one?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Do you want to state that we're going to do these manually?
Great idea. Thank you, Victoria. Because the computer systems, wait for it to pop up and, and we had so many items polled for the action items, she suggested that maybe we just do it the old-fashioned way just to keep it moving because we have so many to get through. So, we will just do these old-school.
I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting because as of this morning, there was no documentation and so I have not had an opportunity to review it.
And I was just going to say that I checked back late, late today and I still didn't see a report. And so, I was going to abstain because I did not have a chance to review it. It's, nothing against the, we just probably said since we're always approving, but we like to be able to see the stuff and so, it's just.
We didn't get it on time.
So, did we get a first and a second, Victoria?
Yes, I have Jordana and I believe it was Susan Shaffer. And I would just add that it did come late, but, and it's totally understandable that people didn't get a chance to see it, but I happened to be able to see it. So, I'm personally fine with it.
Okay.
I just ask, is there a downside? Since we've all got it, if we put it off?
I'd have to, is this, is this the five oh four?
Yes.
Yeah, just point of clarifications, five oh four plans are for students in general education, so they're not considered special education services. The five oh four plan committee does need, if you look at the attachment, there isn't a lot of information because eighty-three percent of them are just supporting supplemental aids and testing accommodations. And then there's one medical plan. But it wouldn't be, it's really in review, so it's really to get them for next year. So, you want to table it for the next meeting. You could do that without any coverage and support for student.
So, there is a sub-motion on the floor to table it. Susan, were you seconding that motion?
Hold on, it, it's actually really short. So, I'm seeing this for the first time. So, it's actually really short.
I think it's more of a point that items on the agenda that have attachments, having an opportunity to review them before, that was the point.
We shouldn't be getting documentation the day of meeting.
I understand. So, the motion on the floor is to table it. Do I have a second for the motion on the floor? All right, discussion on the item?
I just have a question, I guess, for Chris. I don't, I'm happy to feel it's important and I'm going to look at this. I'm happy to.
I'll, I'll stay. You know what? I'll stay. It's fine.
No, I don't.
No, I mean, I don't want to hold anything up, so.
Okay. But it sounds like it's not going to be a problem.
I'll, I'll second the motion first.
I mean, if enough people have reviewed it.
Does there's a second for the motion on the floor to table it? Discussion to table it till next week?
It'd be fair that it has no effect on services and it'll provide members not appearing to review it. That would be my thought.
I literally am able to review it right here. So, it's so short. So, I'm fine with it. I just, I think it's, I think it's fair, though, for board members. And look, I'm not going to be here moving forward, but it's nice if board members have more time to review documents. We're supposed to have. Yeah. You know what? If you don't mind, I'll look at it now. It's fine.
Do you, do you want those coming today? I mean, there, there's no way to get them.
No, I understand. We're just discussing whether we want to table, table it or not.
But it, that's a good point to, to Brian's question is, with special education committee recommendations, the committees are, are meeting real time, so that's why we put them on real time. That, that will always be a push me only with special education because they're meeting real time.
No, I understand that.
But we could have put it off to the second.
Well, that's what I mean, just the, when you know what's coming the day of.
Right.
Maybe we put it on to the meeting after so people.
Or even if it's Friday.
But we still, we still will continue to have that conundrum with special education.
We'll deal with them, you know, on a case-by-case. We'll deal with them, you know, on a case by case, I just think as a general.
It'll, it'll be an issue.
So, um, for me personally, I'm comfortable voting on it, um, right now, so, um, that's where I stand. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
It's fine. It's fine, I'm looking at it now.
So the motion on the floor is to table it till next week.
I would track that motion.
We're gonna vote on it, we're gonna call it to a vote.
Okay.
Um, all those in favor of tabling it till next week, raise your hand and say aye. All those in favor of voting on it tonight, raise your hand and say aye. Um, further motion on the floor to accept the, um, five oh four committee recommendation seven one. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven two? Can I get a motion to approve seven two?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye. It's unanimous, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven three?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is the thing that I had raised earlier and, um, uh, so I, I guess one of my questions is, this board recently approved an additional three hundred and fifty thousand and change for additional items at Stella, now the Learning Center. Some of those, I'm still having, I'm still struggling with because when I go back to that original board packet, still seems to me that some of these items were supposed to be in that original piece, so I, I frustrated by that. So this, then on top of that, we're talking about an amount up to, we're not being given any guidance about what that amount could look like. And it just concerns me that we have, if we were to have five hundred thousand, whether there's a discussion about, um, after all of everything at the Learning Center and then additionally this much more money into the capital reserve. And I feel like there's never an effort to sort of give back to the taxpayers. So I just raise that I'm a little concerned with the amount of this um, following the additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we just did for Stella and that's over and above everything that the taxpayers have approved. So that's just my concern here.
This is just the placeholder and, you know, not to exceed, it could be a hundred dollars goes in this. But the capital reserve, I think, just for your, you know, well-being is, that one has to be vote, to take money out of this reserve has to be voted on by the taxpayers. So I think that's, I think that, um, so, you know, moving forward, should, you know, something big have to be paid for and not have to go back to the taxpayers for something. And we know that there's big somethings around this district like the, the gym ceiling, the gym floor.
Boiler.
The, yeah, a boiler. That, so you don't, you don't have to, you know, go back to the taxpayers and say, oh, we got this big emergency. This is, this is a fund, and the voters have to vote on it. So for example, this is where we went when they were gonna do the turf. They were gonna go to this and the voters voted not to use the money from the reserve to subsidize the turf, the synthetic turf. So it's, it's voter approval.
I, I think what's confusing about this is that it says approve deposit in facilities capital reserve. It doesn't say approve, um, you know, a max, a potential maximum amount or a potential, potential amount.
So it says.
It says approve deposit in facilities capital reserve fund under subject. So I think that's where, at least I was confused, cause it made it seem to me that.
We were transferring money, weren't we?
Yeah, exactly.
They're authorizing it and transfer without hearing from it later.
Yeah, right, exactly, right.
Hearing about it later.
But in the wording, it says approves a deposit up to and not exceeding five hundred thousand.
Which means it would never come back to us as long as it's under five hundred.
Right, that's, right. But that's not the case, you're saying that the board has to approve the amount. It's just, the way it's worded was very unclear. I mean, I'm sure it's worded legally properly, but I think it left the wrong, I mean, I, I thought that as long as it's below that and the fact that it's called approving a deposit, not a, a potential deposit.
Discussion from anybody else? No? No one discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any? Alright, motion carries. Um, can I get a motion to approve seven four? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I had a question about, um, the, let me pull it up. The amount in the classroom reserves. Because it seemed excessive for some of them. I know that the classroom, the class twenty twenty-four, which I think is the sixth grade class, is like twenty-seven thousand in their fund already. And then the two thousand twenty, it said a little over ten thousand, two thousand nineteen, a little over ten thousand. So my question was for two thousand, class of two thousand twen- uh, nineteen, which is graduating this year, what does that look like? Is it still ten thousand dollars? Because it seems like a lot of years, we just roll the money over versus using it to help underwrite costs. So we just had the prom, for instance. Every, you know, every senior could have had their ticket paid for and they still would have had this money left over. Every junior.
So as of, as of thirty-four days ago, the, the class fund was exhausted. And the, the cost of the prom was gonna be, um, actually, they actually had, were short of some money and the junior class has voted to donate like twelve hundred dollars to the senior class.
Alright, so then, so it's, it'd be a zero balance at the end of the year.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty strict directive to the classes is to exhaust the funds before they graduate.
And I know in middle school, we struggled with paying for costs for trips and those, we were trying to keep the funds up so it offsets the cost for parents who are not asking to dole out, we wanted these great trips for them. We wanna have a fund that's big so we can use it to offset the cost for seventh and eighth grade.
Sounds good. Alright, then it's.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I'd like to just say, um, you know, we had a lot of conversation today about, um, Norah King Smith. And, um, you know, I had, there, we had reviewed the RFP and, um, I just wanna be aware that, you know, I've reached out and asked them for a letter of intent so that they could tell us what, um, what their intent is because we, uh, and the proposal that they gave to us, it only gave a specific cost and not the whole thing. So I just wanna make sure that everyone's comfortable voting on this. And then as opposed to not having a contract negotiated in full, does everyone understand that?
Yeah.
I know we had, myself, Christian, Jordana had a conversation today about it, so.
Yeah, I would just add that, so, um, often with these types of contracts, we'd be approving the specific dollar amount of the contract. Um, as an audit committee, as we, um, looked at the various proposals from the different, um, audit candidates, some of them gave, uh, much larger, uh, fixed fee arrangements where they were gonna do a risk assessment plus one cycle analysis.
For a year.
The one we chose is more à la carte, where they had the lowest price, but it was only for the risk assessment. And then the à la carte cycle analysis is, um, more of an à la carte. We, like, we just don't really know what, we, we have to decide as an audit committee, as a board, what we'd want that analysis to be. Uh, there are so many different options.
After they go.
And then they would have to tell us what a fixed price would be for that. So on the one hand, we can approve this now and, and appoint them and then just kind of leave the, the pricing and the contract up to our attorneys, um, and the audit committee decide later. Or we can table it and then get that information and vote on it more complete on July second. Either seems to be feasible.
I think in terms of transparency, it would probably be better to have a contract to vote on that includes the amount of the base contract.
Yes.
Um, the audit committee discussed that between now and our meeting July second, we weren't gonna be engaging them in any work. So it wouldn't impact the work of the relationship at all, but we would have a resolution with a financial amount and a contract that was already resolved.
Correct. So my question for those who, you who serve on the audit committee, um, would you be able, like, since those other pieces are kind of à la carte, would we be able to wrap up those conversations in two weeks? Or is that something like, you know, we'd have to come back to the board and then there's another discussion?
I, I think it kind of depends on the one, alright, so I think we have to meet as an audit committee again, which that, I think, you know, we can finagle that. Uh, but we'd have to do it before, not only July second, but enough time to get the board the information we need, right? So we'd have to have an audit committee meeting again within the next week to decide on the cycle analysis that we want in order to have.
I don't think we would.
No, no, I don't, I actually, that wasn't, that, that, I didn't think that that was necessary. I thought that what we would have is a contract that included the base price of the, the, the full initial report.
Yes.
And then the pricing on any additional work done, that was à la carte, which then, some of that is gonna come out of the work they do and the ongoing discussions. So there's no need to make that decision now. They've established a pricing structure.
Right.
That we can be negotiated in the contract, so the contract would be the base price of the work that's agreed upon and the pricing structure for future work.
Okay, that's already in here though. That's already in the documents we received from them. That's why I guess I, I can go either way because on the one hand, right, in the, like, you open the board docs, the, their proposal gave the eight thousand six hundred for each risk assessment and then the hourly rate for every other cycle analysis. So if we're not looking for a fixed price for the little thing, I guess, I just don't. If we want better clarity on the full price, I think there's a lot of stuff we need to take.
I was just gonna say, wouldn't you have to decide what you want and then just like.
If, if we're just looking for the contract to be in place, that's a different thing. And that we just need to then rely on our attorneys to be able to get that done in the next week.
And I, and I did reach out to Tom and I spoke with him and I, and he had recommended that we just need to get a letter of intent from them for the board to review and then we could vote upon it. Then we did not need to go back to the audit committee.
So he recommended that there be an additional document we vote on in the next meeting?
Yes, or we can vote on it now with the, um, understanding that we're gonna get this letter of intent. So it was either way, but I thought, um, I was more comfortable seeing the letter of intent closed.
Table it, yeah, I'm gonna withdraw my second on this after I've heard this discussion.
Hang on, do you wanna make a motion to table it?
Well, I know I wanna leave that up to what they think we should do, but it sounds like what I'm hearing, we should table.
Okay, Chris is making motion to table it. Do I have a second to motion to table?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
Alright, does, uh, any discussion to table this till next, till the next board meeting?
Right, and at that board meeting, it's my intent to, I, I, like I said, I wrote a message for Norah King Smith today for a letter of intent and have, get it, to get it done this week to have Tom located to get it on the next board meeting.
Should we vote to table it?
Yes, I will, yes. I think, I think so.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we'll table that till the next board meeting.
And I'm confident it'll get done.
Thank you, appreciate your work on this. Can I get a motion to approve seven six?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
The latest version we got was the same as the last meeting, correct? There's, so none of the changes that we, we, uh, that we had asked.
It says no commercial UFOs and limits the time and it's five hundred dollars a month.
And I'm confused about the, I, I, you know, do this earlier today, I'm still confused about that they did not address the tax question. So I'm just stumped as to why that would be.
What about the parking on the side of the road where that goat on the boat and the turfs is? Is that not parking spaces that can be used? Isn't it?
There, these lots, these spots are in the lot.
I understand they're in the lot, but, um, we would, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last meeting, um, I had an event. Uh, but, uh, we would need additional spots to those spots there for the twelve.
But you want, ideally, the staff would be in the lot so that you free up the spots on the streets for parents, et cetera.
So they have easy access.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, it's, they're not answering or making, they're not addressing the issues and concerns of having in the contract. And that, I don't understand why they're holding firm on that tax line, which if it, it's not applicable.
So that tax line, Catholic Church, they've been around for two thousand years. They, it's kind of like their game, you know, like they.
You don't want the spots to be the fuck?
I mean, I feel like we should have got the spots when we bought the building.
Yes, they should have.
So here's, here's Kathy's response, who's the, uh, she's the church. She said, uh, my understanding is the tax paragraph will not be removed from the contract. And from what I understand, that's standard in all of their contracts, even though our attorney said we're a tax-free entity, they're a tax-free entity, it really, it doesn't make any sense being in there. So, but it's just, it's standard in there, in there.
I mean, from my perspective, they're refusing to budge on it, both because they can and because it's just a risk allocation exercise, right? They, they can do that because they don't wanna take any risk of having offenses and, and that's fine. I mean, I still, you know, as we discussed last week, it's not the best drafted contract, but it is what it is. And if we want to have parking, we kind of need to approve it.
I mean, it's six P M. issue, but a lot of things at school are later than six, so we have to be adding a lot like six.
That was another thing I raised that I was concerned about.
Well, I think this is just, this is, um, this is only for employee parking. So our employees are pretty much gonna be done, it's, it's our business, it's our business people and it's our pre-K teachers that are gonna be parking there. So I think our business offices are gonna be done by then.
I also, I was looking, I mean, it says, you know, you're not allowed to remain after six P M. Without express written consent of the licensor, like, we can ask, right? And they can say yes, just like the agreement's terminable on thirty days' notice, right? It has very little teeth about anything, so I think you'd hope that if we have an event that doesn't conflict with the church's event, that they would just give us the consent to park after six if we need to.
Yeah, I just thought that was a burden on the school district to have to ask each time. And given that some of us, district people often work later than six, um, I don't know, it just seemed, uh.
Don't our facilities vehicles have commercial plates?
Yes, they do.
They, they can't use all.
They are going back to, they are going back to the diocese about, about that.
I mean, it just makes no sense that our own school vehicles can park there.
They are gonna go back and ask the diocese about that.
So if they are, then that would be a change of language in this document?
Potentially. Um, my hope is that you'd agree to the contract and then we could, we could redo it and bring it back up if they decide to change. I don't have real high hopes with the Catholic Church. I think the majority of the people that are gonna be parking there are gonna be your pre-K teacher, your pre-K teacher's assistant, the people that work in the business office, you know, your superintendent, your superintendent secretary. I drive a Honda Insight, industry clerk.
So as a practical matter, if, because there are masses and funerals during the week now, during the school year. I've been to them where the parking lot gets filled.
Right.
So, and we can't have any signs, I saw that.
No, no.
No, can you paste it on the?
No, no, we can, right, we paint it, right, there's not gonna be signs, but there's gonna be, there's gonna be paint.
And we pay for that.
So we pay for that, let's just put that aside. So if, if our staff pulls in and those are filled, other people are parked in those spots, are we then allowed to use other spots in that lot?
Well, we have, we'll have security, I mean, they're, they're ensuring those spots are ours, you know, so.
Uh, right, but that still doesn't answer the question. They don't have people out there making sure that the right people are parking in the right spots.
We, we have.
We go.
So we're gonna have a security person out there in the lot?
I'm sure that.
Okay.
I, I don't see, people tend to, especially people that go to church, tend to play by the rules. I'm so guilty all the time, all because of my Catholic upbringing.
Can I just, two questions, I guess. I mean, I think everybody agrees this is not a great agreement. Do we need these spots now? And what happens if we don't approve this agreement?
So, um, we would wait until, till July second and see if they make any movement. I'm not very hopeful of them making any movement, because they have no skin in this game. They're doing this for us. Um, right now, it, it would be great to have that, that parking available because we're already starting to tie up traffic. Like, I, I have a meeting there on Wednesday and there's gonna be like five of us from the district down there for a meeting. And we're parked all over the place and, you know, it's, we're in the season now, it's busy. And I don't know if the neighbors are liking that a lot that much, you know? So it would be nice if we were a good neighbor and, you know, we freed up that parking.
Um, this, this contract has been going back and forth for several years and I do feel like it's as good as it's gonna get. And I think that the things that are in it that we don't like are not deal breakers in my view. Kind of with Jordana, it's not perfect, but I think that, um, dragging it out further, I don't think is worth the time and energy to everybody involved, so, um, I think we should approve it. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Yeah?
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I think it's not a great agreement. Maybe we should have gotten something better earlier, but I know that when the, when the watch case factory, it ended smaller, but when the, when that construction was going on, it was a huge burden on local businesses. I think one has closed, um, so this might be a small example of it, but if they, we need the parking and this is the best we're gonna get, um, I'll support.
Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh, can I get a motion to approve seven seven?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is there a reason why we would enter in a five-year contract versus having them do it the first year and then seeing if we're happy to renew and have a, you know, renewals clause in it?
It, it's not a five-year contract.
Oh, it's just to project out to five years?
Yeah, it, we're required to do a five-year building condition survey, so. They'll use next year to put that together for us and then that survey's good for five years.
Okay, I, I misread the agreement.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Alright, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven eight?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
This includes reference to Montauk Bus Service providing transportation this summer. Um, what summer transportation do they provide?
Um, when I spoke to Maude and Phil, did you, I'm sure you spoke with Arketa Bus as well. Um, I think they just have that in there, um, but I think that it's just, you know, a placeholder, again, that we're a placeholder.
That's absolutely correct. Um, I, I have a copy of the contract here, I read through it. This contract, um, and this goes back, this is the original contract, June sixth of two thousand and seven, that we've been renewing every year. Uh, and it has, it can, it's twenty-nine pages long. Contains all the provisions that, uh, protect the district, routes. For example, on page four, we've got the right to make any changes. we've got the right to make any changes, additions or provisions to any and all routes. So this contract inures back to the original and it's, we have tremendous protection with this original contract.
Right, but I've just, so in general, we don't use Montauk in the summer because we have our own fleet and our own drivers.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
But it's in there in case we need it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven nine?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to know why this was retro a year ago.
She was board approved, but for some reason we didn't build her terms and conditions as a, as a school bus monitor. So she was approved, but we didn't, we didn't build her terms and conditions.
So is it legal to sign a contract or had it be retroactive a year ago?
She, I don't know.
Well, she was hired a year ago by resolution. There was a glitch that there was no M O A, signed M O A, the staff dismissed it. We, we had a conversation about that today.
No, I know what happens, I just had the, I emailed that legal question, can you legally have a contract like this that's retroactive a year ago? I just didn't know, it was a legal question, so.
She's been getting paid.
She's been getting paid and she's been provided all the provisions that the M O A carries that the other monitors have.
No, no, I, I appreciate she's getting paid and getting that, I just didn't know you could legally have a contract retroactive with these terms. It's just a legal question, not, I'm glad she's getting paid, she's got paid.
What, what we did, we replicated the three-year M O A that everyone else had.
Any other discussion?
We could have her, her data signature would be current date, we're not going to have to post date her signature.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? One abstained, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven ten?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven eleven?
So moved.
Thank you, second. Need a second?
No, second.
Thank you, discussion?
Yeah, again, this says up to but not exceeding and the amount was so specific, I was just, I had a question about that.
Because in the presentation I made, it's got to be exactly, it can't exceed two percent. That figure is exactly two percent.
Okay, that's why, okay, thank you, thank you, okay. And again, this would require a board action to actually transfer the funds into this, correct?
That's correct, all this is right now is a placeholder.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven twelve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I had questions, I'll just ask this before we move out because I didn't know, I mean, this is a large contract that the board enters into, so I didn't know if this was market grade, if this was customary, I didn't know if we sent out for other bids or if everyone was happy or, it just didn't seem like we had a lot of information on it, we were just renewing it to renew it. So that was my question to the board and where my thoughts were, that, is that what other school attorneys are charging, education law attorneys are charging, I, I don't know, I don't know what our deals are with him, is it similar to other schools, is it not?
I don't, I don't think that we have that information because we haven't done that, we've been contracting with our school attorney.
Forever.
Forever.
It's a large number, so that's what my question was.
Yeah.
But if no one's in turn, that, that was mine.
Yeah. That's a good question.
I think it's a really good question and it's something that maybe the board should consider moving forward. I would say that just in my short time here, I think his, because he's been with the district so long, the historical perspective and his experience would be pretty tough for anybody to compete with. But I think you're raising a good point and at least in my three years, the board has never looked into going elsewhere. So it, it's supposed to try to explore it at some point.
It would have to be a request to the board for, to, to do that work, you know, for the business administrator to do that work.
Sure.
I, I would be wanting to suggest that to the board when they had, you know, a long-term relationship with their school attorney. But if they, if you make that request to the business office, they can go out and do that work for the board.
Well, the problem, the problem is that we're running out of time because it's already June seventeenth and July one is right around the corner. So what do we do for the attorney? That's going to be a problem.
Right.
Any other discussions?
I mean, we could, I'd like to throw an idea, we, we could do an R F P and, and look at something for next year. So we've got plenty of time, just like we did with the internal audit.
And again, we need the will of the board to do that and that's not something I'm interested in because of the reasons that Susan brought up. I think that as, you know, our superintendent retires and we have a new board, I think having somebody in the room who has some historical perspective has its value.
And he knows all the negotiating groups, everything, so that would be a huge loss. It's, it sounds like, yeah, I mean, it sounds like right now we are, this is coming to us at a point where there'd be a lapse in a, a, a relationship with an attorney if we waited, unfortunately. But I think it's really valid to at least look at a market analysis of is this competitive going right? So perhaps that's something we do and we just, that gets on our plate earlier next year. And we, we have that reflection earlier next year, just a pressure test that we're paying a fair rate.
Any other discussion?
I would just say that without knowing what is considered to be market, I mean, I think we're getting really good value for the price that we're paying. It is a large contract, but I think it's a lot cheaper than, like, some districts have in-house counsel. We couldn't never, I mean, we'd have to pay probably three or four times this amount to get that, so I think we're getting good value.
Thank you. Any other discussions?
Also, for South County, pretty low rate, right?
I don't know.
Do you want to draw the rate cards and compare now?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven thirteen?
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve seven fourteen?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion?
I was going to make a motion to table us, I asked this to pull that, I had requested some additional information on the scope of this employment, on what he does, on certain criteria that are part of two-eleven waiver and also the S R O. One that we haven't received yet, I don't know, Katie, you were working on that information.
If you have it, we can go into exec now. Do you have it now?
I think I sent everybody everything I have.
When we sent a bunch of emails this afternoon that answered.
I didn't, I didn't read them either.
She sent a bunch of emails this afternoon that answered, I think, most of your questions. I still had a question, though.
So let's do this, let's bump this one to the end of the night. We'll do exec and we'll come back out and vote on that and we can have a discussion and hopefully address your questions. And if not, we'll table it till the next week and she can gather more information.
And I know my public, my question would definitely be for public, but I'm happy to have.
Okay, well, we can talk about the public, any public pieces now?
Yeah, I would just say, I think so much of it has very little to do with the person, the individual.
Correct, it's the job, that's what I was asking, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I misunderstood, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was about the process and specifically, that's why I was asking.
I thought you were talking about his.
Yeah, actually, I mean, whatever the person is really helpful.
Nothing about him individually and that's why I was asking.
To have a public discussion, if Katie wouldn't mind just kind of explaining what an S R O is versus a security guard and kind of what the two-eleven waiver is just.
Wanted some background information, that's why I asked to table, not specific to the individual.
Let, let me, let me. Let me put it in context, I think what people are confused about and it's come up in public domain and I think from some board members, is that he has a title of which we did do a waiver, you sent that to us earlier, that appears to be a title that is typically a police department role and not a school role.
Correct, yes. Trained, trained, right, school.
And so I think there's confusion there as to why this title, given the fact that we pay him. And Brian did have a number of questions, you specifically, and I don't know if some of those are public and you did address those in the email. But, so perhaps you could set up the stage for us why that is, why the waiver. And then there were some other questions that frankly you had that I thought were good questions, I have the same. But because they're security related, I don't know from the, I don't know if they could be discussed in public. So that would have to be in private.
Got it. So there's a, so there's a dual path to S R Os. One is through police agencies, S R Os. And then New York State Department of Education has what they call a two-eleven waiver. It has to be someone who is a former police officer and you can get a, so if there's a need in a district for an S R O and your, your, the, the need can be substantiated by, we put out an advertisement, nobody responds to the advertisements because safety people out here are, have, they have so much work to do, they can be security guards anywhere. So we present the need, we should, we have to follow a very specific process, which I faxed out to all the board members. And actually, if I can, if you guys get the agendas on Wednesdays, last week, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, if you can send me that stuff like last week, we don't have to have these last-minute conversations. Because I, I have, I have these things at my fingertips and I can get them to you.
That's the only reason I was asking to table, because I know I had sent an email last Thursday and I do have personal days and then.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't get the.
That was mine.
Oh, I didn't get it, I, I don't, unless I missed it somewhere in the, you know.
That was the reason I was asking to table, so we could talk process and there's no rush for it.
No, but, but she's got the information, I think.
So here's, so it's, so it's a.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So it's a two-eleven waiver and it goes through New York State Department of Education. So this isn't, their waiver is not for a gun-carrying police officer, theirs is for a New York State S R O. So that is really somebody that comes into schools and does three things. They work with the safety and security of the building, they can help the administrators conduct investigations and they're there to help train, you know? So like, so in our case, one of the big training mechanisms we have is just at, every year, everybody has to know how the traffic flow happens at the elementary school because everybody wants to park where the school buses park. So that's a huge safety item that you, when you leave morning program, where do you go when you leave morning program and where do you enter? So there's a very heavy, like, we don't have a stand-up and train everybody and come to our meeting. It's a every day, day in and day out, what does safety look like in our building? Then if you want to come back into the building after morning programs, you exit and you come back in through the front door. So those are daily training things that happen day-to-day inside Harbor. So those are the three things through New York State, so it's a dual, so there's two ways to become an S R O. There's one through the police department and one through New York State Department of Education. And that's a waiver and that happens year to year and you have to prove need that you need it. So we do that every year and we've done that for the last four years, this will be the fourth year that we've done that.
So the, the dual pathway, the one pathway is that it would be a, like a currently-employed police officer?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we're doing the secondary pathway instead of the primary pathway?
So for the last three years, Sag Harbor Village, who we could do an agreement with for roughly nine out of twelve months, their average police officer makes between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty thousand plus their benefits. We could, we could do an agreement with them where we pay nine-twelfth of their salary. So come out around a hundred and.
Well, I mean, their starting salary is forty-five.
You, you would go to their average salary, so right now.
The step raises, but, so I did, we should get that information.
If you, if you, if you look, so A J. and I have talked already and he said that's about where we would land because he wouldn't want to give us his most junior officer, he would want to give us somebody who's got a lot of experience because he would want to do that. So right now, East Hampton's paying about a hundred and fifty for their, their S R O in the middle school for nine months.
What are the peers doing, what are our peers doing, East Hampton, what is Southampton?
So East Hampton, East Hampton is doing, is, East Hampton, but let me get back to our reason. Is they're, they were down three officers, now they're down two officers. So, and he will not clear that gap until January of twenty twenty. So he's down, he's, you know, he has his sights on filling that gap, but he, they had people out on long-term disability, so they, that gap was still there, so they're, they're.
They don't have the manpower.
They don't have the manpower right now.
So they're not legally obligated to provide it to us, is what I'm hearing, then?
They have to really take care of their people first.
Right, I'm just saying that, but does, does the law require that if the district wants to have a police officer in this role that we're willing to fund nine-twelve, that they have to supply someone? Or no, they can say, I don't have, we don't have enough people, you got to get it done on your own?
They got, they got to take care of their, their people first.
Would it be better if they showed they have A J. here to ask them these questions?
Actually, I, I think also you would want to check with your administrators as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's a conversation that, yeah.
And I think part of that is public discussion and I don't, I don't know the line or crosses between public and exec.
Right.
But I do have some things to say.
Well, I would also imagine that, I mean, there, there may be advantages to how we're doing it. You don't have someone walking around in a uniform with a holster and a gun.
Mm-hmm.
You don't, I mean, not, not that they do that in the schools.
And also, they're not our employee. They're, they're, they're the Sag Harbor Village employee. And so like one of the problems East Hampton runs into, when they want to take their vacation, they could take their vacation whenever they want to. And the other thing is, again, they're not our employees, so what they call it is security card creep. If they want to start investigating our children, they can investigate without having to check with any of us. So I can tell Steve what I want him to be doing every single day and, and it can be aligned to the Board of Education's goals. So, and he, because he's our employee, so if I want to send him to training for specifically what we're training about, I have complete confidentiality, so there's, you know, right now, we can pay, you know, twenty-eight dollars an hour for somebody. I don't have to pay their benefits, I don't have to pay anything else and he does exactly what we ask him to do. Go ahead.
First of all, I just want to disclose, he's a personal friend of mine, it doesn't prevent me from being impartial. Lordy, I just want to disclose that, but I, I would like to hear from the administrators, I don't know if we want to do that now, it makes more sense to do that now, right?
Yeah.
I mean, and we might want to hear from the public, so if we had it as an agenda item, a later, maybe they have been put as well.
Yeah, I think some of the, some of the things that, that I would have to say, I'm not sure they're appropriate for this setting or they may be exec, but I think they're important things for, for its consideration.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll go to exec. Executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to reconvene from executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Absent of Susan, I'm going to change.
I was wondering, I didn't see her coming.
He's gone through this.
Yeah. So my computer's asleep, where are we on the agenda? Oh, we are still, yeah, we're still on that one. Other discussion, the motion on the floor is to appoint the S R O. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
I, I don't know if we, I don't remember if we did this before we went in the room. But if we did, can we just make clear for the public that this appointment is how it's in compliance with the law and regulations so that there's no question or concern about that?
Yeah, I think the, the thing that helped me was when Katie described the two pathways to appoint an S R O. And I think that people have been focusing on one of those pathways and, and seeing that we're not in compliance with that pathway, but there's a secondary pathway and that's the one that we've been utilizing and that's the discord that the public is, is feeling is that.
And if they want to Google it, they can Google New York State Department of Education, two-eleven waiver, S R O, and it'll come right up.
And we've gotten that for several years and they're, and that we're in compliance and you can get that year after year.
Yes.
And you're in compliance.
And specifically addresses retired police officers.
Yes, yes, but it's only a one-year waiver, right.
So it has to be renewed.
Every year, you can't make it long-term, it has to be a year-to-year waiver.
All right, any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve item seven fifteen?
So moved.
Second.
I'll give it to them.
Discussion?
I, I have a question on point C on the first page, which says, non-resident families have submitted a request in writing, the following guidelines will be followed. And C says, no increase in the size of faculty or staff will be necessary to accommodate them. So that's different than the cost, because there could be costs but not in addition to, to faculty or staff, correct?
Oh, like if it's special ed or something?
Or if it's, you know, the school finds materials, school. Or if it's, you know, the school funds, materials, the school funds the cost of the IB exam, like all that. So we're not saying that they have to cover those costs, just, but that we can, as long as it's not an increase in size of faculty or staff, right? So my question was, how about year two, three, four? Like, what happens if all of a sudden we get more residents in? And now having these additional non-residents will increase faculty or staff? Am I interpreting this incorrectly?
Um, I think you have to join the policy committee.
No, I'm just asking that.
No, it's a good point.
That, you know, sometimes you get an influx, sometimes you don't.
So should it be an, like, should the wording be annually reviewed? Like, I think maybe there has to be an edit in there for annual review.
You're much closer to this than I am. I'm just raising it as if that is a scenario that could happen. Do we want to make sure it's addressed in the policy? And I'll defer to the folks on the committee to think about how that might be addressed.
I feel like I think, and I think Carlene can probably keep us on as well on this. I think it doesn't address this situation either way. Um, and I think it's, by not addressing it, it gives great latitude. Um, on the one hand, if, if you accept a student, and then all of a sudden, there's an influx of students, and now the class sizes are off, and the extra student is costing the district money, from a financial perspective, uh, that would be detrimental. But you have to balance that against the, the idea of educating children. And do you want to, just because that eventually shifts that, the numbers off kilter, do you want to deny that person access? So I think it's a case-by-case situation, and I think the policy is drafted broadly and vaguely enough that there's great latitude where you could just kind of determine that ad hoc.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, um, I appreciate that. I think it differently because we're not denying them access to education. They have legal access to free education in the district they actually live in. So this is, this is not a right, this is a privilege in that sense. But I, I probably made the wrong assumption that once they're here, as long as they're kind of good citizens in the school, after a year or two, we're not going to say, I'm sorry, you know, it's now gotten too big, you have to go. Right?
I think the idea is you can, it, there's, that's why I'm saying it's, it's vague. So we, we probably don't want to make that decision one way or the other in this policy. But I also think, like, totally, you know, it, it's worth us all discussing. That's why we have this on the floor, so if anyone else.
So this policy allows for those decisions to be made, doesn't have to be explicit?
That is my interpretation of it, is that we can, it creates latitude to decide.
Is that your understanding, Katie?
Well, it, it's open, because it says, no increase in the size of faculty or staff will be necessary to accommodate them. So, and that is, so that's the policy, and it doesn't, we don't talk about, we, we aren't putting it in any tense, right? So we're not saying at the time of admission. So I'm just checking to see if there's another, those parents would tend to become residents.
And we have Virgo's here too, who's also on the policy committee.
I can't say anything, so.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're just approving the first read.
Yeah, first read, first read. Um, can I get a motion to approve at seven sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion. No discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Um, committee reports, were there any committee reports?
Can I put a big shout out to the policy committee? Of course. Every three weeks, and they work so hard on this work. It is, it's, it's really tough work, and I just, I, my big shout outs to them. And they're going to meet over the summer to work too, so, um, just a hardworking group of people. Okay, Katie?
Any other committee reports?
Um, I have committee reports. Um, the, um, Diversity and Inclusion Committee would like to, um, have some time, uh, for the, to the Board of Education on your, uh, July second, uh, meeting. Um, just to give you guys an update, I said you generally don't have presentations at the reorg meeting. But they're really ramped up about the work that they're doing. Um, and they've also scheduled, um, and I, I think I sent this to, I know, I did send this to the board, that they're going to have, um, uh, a workshop in August that's going to be wrapped around the new teacher, or new teacher training, uh, which is for our first four years. And they're mentors, and we're inviting, um, uh, other school districts on the East End. And then we're going to follow with a, all the staff, um, uh, workshop in, at the Superintendent's Conference Day in November. So they're doing a lot of work. They're working on their libraries, um, for K through six. They're just doing a lot of work.
Thanks.
Yeah, and as you see, the policy did a lot of work as well.
Okay, Katie, what they do is really important, but would it be possible to do it the, the next educational meeting? Just because the reorg meeting is so packed with stuff.
I can, I can ask them.
Wouldn't it make a material difference in their work? Just, it tends to be like our longest meeting.
Talk to Ken Dorf about that, but he has an idea in his mind.
No, I think it's great that they want to come. It's just that seems to be the odd meeting.
I told him it's a, it's a really tough meeting.
Like, they'll be cheated out of, I think, time and attention a little bit, because that's just a, it's like a biggest meeting in a year, procedurally.
Well, I just thought I'd let you know that that's what they would like to do. So I will let them know that it's a, it's a tough meeting for you guys.
Um, any other committee reports? So the last two, um, I've, for discussion are, um, again, we don't need to make any decisions tonight. We're not necessarily voting on any of these items. Um, but there was some thought into the way that we had been doing the communications model. Um, we had tried, um, one model that had our district clerk being the communications coordinator, and had, um, building reps gathering information and feeding it to her, and she was blasting it out. Um, but considering the extent of her workload, um, I think we should probably rethink that model and allow her to just focus on district clerk and the foil requests. Um, and so that, we should rethink the, um, communications model. Did you have some information to share with us today?
I just wanted to give you some history.
Okay.
So, um, uh, you would ask me to just put some timelines together. And this is just some recent history of the communication coordination in Sag Harbor School District. Um, so in February twelfth, two thousand eighteen, the Board of Education approved a po, a pilot of a communication coordination position for eleven hours per week, which would be added to the part-time district clerk. Um, part-time district clerk had been hired, uh, June twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Um, the district clerk would become full-time, um, and they piloted this program from February twelfth through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. They also brought on three building representatives with a prorated stipend, um, to that model. Um, then, um, after conversation, that communication pilot was continued during this current school year. Um, the Board of Education, um, is now reviewing, um, changing that because of the increase in foil requests to the district clerk, which you heard about earlier today. Um, this is where we started the conversation. So I'm going to say this is from February twelfth, two thousand eighteen, these slides, um, is where did we get the funding? We had a fifty thousand dollar, um, hold from the seventeen eighteen budget for fifty thousand dollars for a communication coordinate consultant, or coordinator. Um, and that's where the funding, which, which was recently from, that funded that budget line for the building reps, um, and, um, the, the eleven hours for the district clerk. And here's what we originally broke it down for, is if you go over seventeen hours for a communication coordinator, that person becomes, you have to get the title off the civil service list, which means that's all of Suffolk County. And that means you're getting somebody potentially who's without a job that has that title. So it's really important when you're thinking about this. So we, by giving the eleven hours to bringing the district clerk to full-time and being the coordinator, um, that way we kept, uh, kept away from the civil service list. Um, we also felt that the district clerk was constantly at the board meetings, knew the board goals, um, was in the meetings, knew what was the administrators were presenting all the time. District clerk worked closely with the Board of Education and the administrators for ease of communication. Then we also, um, felt that if we had the communication from the, from the three building reps, one in the elementary, one in the middle school, one in high school, could be feeding her information and working with syntax. So that's where that, that's a breakdown. When you see the blue, that would be where the, um, the district clerk would be spending her time being district clerk. And the red would be where she would be spending her time on communication. So again, this is a breakdown of what that was going to look like, which was, um, gathering information for teachers and staff, gathering information from the building representatives and the district clerk, then sharing the information with syntax. The dollar amount, because someone had asked me about what the dollar amount for syntax communication was. This current year was thirty-six thousand dollars we spend on syntax. Then we also brought on a new, um, that Mr. Fisher was talking about is Apogee. That's our new web-based, um, uh, I'm going to say website, but it's really not. It's, it's web, it's not, it's, um, app-based, that can push out information. And then we also brought on board docs to enhance communication as well. Um, and then teachers and staff have monthly share your news, and this is what the share your news looked like. And then they gathered information, and the district clerk would gather this information and then push it out to whoever needed it. And this is an example of one of those. Now, we had a question, what does syntax do? Syntax not only does communication for us, but also provides emergency communication services, strategic consultation. So for example, um, like the, um, the vape, um, the mercury, uh, hit, hit the streets. It came down from our, um, New York State, um, Department of Ed, sent out that there was this mercury vaping. And I was able to call syntax and I'm like, calm down. It looks like it's in very few buildings. It looks like it had to have built, built between this time and this time. Um, you know, we're going to have a meeting with all the facilities directors to share that information directly to them. Here's what you need to test, here's what you don't need to test. So they tend to tell you what's a crisis and what's not a crisis. Um, they also pump information to us constantly on what to be on the lookout for. When you have tragedies in the district or concerns, like if there's a bus accident or that kind of thing, they'll help you vet that communication. They also, like, put together, um, with us our, um, our budget newsletters, and they know your timeframes. They knew your legal obligations, stuff that, you know, like, is not right on the top of my head all the time. And they know that kind of thing. They also, like, help with, like, when we have the Valsal lunches and the lunches with legislators, they're the ones that are always sending us the reminders of what time it is. And they're, they're privy to a lot of, um, scholarships and that kind of thing. And they funnel that to the district. Um, so those are also the county and Long Island events. So those are some of the things that syntax does for us. So I know there was a question about that. And then, of course, there's a new, uh, website or app by Apogee. So this is just some of the history. We also brought on board docs. I think that was another thing to increase, um, information sharing. So next steps for the board to have discussions around is potentially maybe hiring a communications person, considering staying under the seventeen hours for that person to avoid hiring off the Suffolk County Civil Service list. That would be, um, that would have a lot of red flags, um, because that civil service list is very long. And you have to take the person, like, the top three candidates, score a hundred. That might not be your best person, and they might, most definitely might not be from the East End. Um, building level communication reps, since the person that you might hire for a communication is mobile, you wouldn't need, and the district clerk has not been able to be mobile, um, you might not have to hi, you utilize the, um, building level communication reps, which is, were four thousand dollar stipends, so that's a savings of twelve thousand dollars. Um, and then, um, you may want to consider having a summer focus group of administrators that can help define the job description a little more clearly for the board. So that's, that's, that's kind of a summation. Good?
Welcome.
Good?
Nice.
Um, as an aside, about four or five years ago, the Communication Committee had made a recommendation to do this. And they did develop a job description, which I probably still have, so I can also circulate that. It's just a starting point.
Mm-hmm.
Because they looked at what other districts were doing that had part-time communication people, just, just like this.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Um, I guess, and I found that incredibly helpful to know what syntax is doing for us. Because that was my big question, is I keep hearing this name, but they're doing things kind of that we're not involved in, so it's all behind the scenes.
Right.
What I would love to know is, do they have recommendations as to what we could do to increase our communications outreach? Because they're in this business, maybe they have some thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they pitched us to have their employee embedded in the district. They do that with some districts. So when Dr. Brusso was here, um, he and I met with Kathy, Kathy Dady. Um, and that was one of the services they do provide, and there were pluses and minuses to that. So I think it'd be interesting to get their input. I don't know how impartial they'd be with that, because it is a, it is a revenue stream to, to go down that path with.
Any other thoughts on this today? Like I said, we don't need to make a decision right now. Um, and just, uh, in light of a new year starting up, we might think about a different model.
I have a lot of thoughts about this. It's already nine thirty.
That's your last question, Susan, and you're in communications, so I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Um, yeah, I mean, look, I, uh, I appreciate that we've tried different approaches. I was not, as you know, a supporter of some of these, because, um, I didn't think they were addressing the issues we needed to address. Um, so I think there's a strategic communications piece that seems to me has been missing. And there's also the issue of the fact that the way people need to receive communications and the communications environment has shifted in the last number of years. And what I think is a systematic challenge that, um, schools are not being prepared for. And when I went to my board training, I was shocked at what was being recommended to board members in terms of being quiet and not communicating and not getting on social media and all the rest of this. And yet I think that's actually counterproductive. They're, I think they're missing the boat in terms of where people are. And if you back up even before the Communications Committee, there was a void. And there was a member of this community and a former board member who actually started some, uh, you know, online, there's a Facebook group that's been around now for quite a few years, um, that for many parents has been, uh, you know, I think the best way to actually get information. For some crazy reason, sometimes we get it from that group uh, before we even get it from the school. I don't know how it does it. So, uh, I would just throw out that in anything you do moving forward, and if you, number one, if you resurrect a, a sort of a communications committee that can grapple with us. Uh, number two is, uh, I would consider talking to that individual, um, because I think she's been very effective. Uh, and actually, if, I think if there's a solution, it would be really nice to see it come from within our school family and the district rather than some subcontractor who's probably driving an hour and a half to get here and is not going to understand the players and, you know, the whole nine yards. So to me, it's not about the lack of pushing a button. It's kind of having a plan in place, having an understanding and appreciation for the new environment that we're all operating in. Um, and then, you know, somebody who can put those pieces together and, so hopefully alleviate some of the burden on people. And because of the time, I'm not going to go on. Those are my main points.
The other thing that's recommended, best practices, is really if you want to understand where the pain points are and opportunities, is to, to make more database decisions. And so you see that NISBA and other educational organizations really recommend surveying your constituencies, particularly around communication. And we, there was a time when we did that, and we, we kind of stopped with the committee going away. So I would suggest that when we move forward, that we help, think about that as in helping to inform our decisions.
Any other discussion tonight? All right, we'll put this on an agenda for another evening. Uh, we just wanted to put it out there. Um, likewise, the board calendar, you all received dates. Uh, we'd like to put the board dates on the draft that you have on the next meeting for adoption. So, um, anybody who has any feedback on any of those dates, the administration, the cabinet, everybody. Um, it's just to let you know that we, we'd like to adopt that as the reorg.
There's just one thing I noticed that, and this is public, which is why I'm saying it here versus emailing it privately, is that historically, we have had one regular board meeting, you know, reorg meeting in July, and then we'll have a goals meeting. And in August, we've had two regular board meetings, year after year. Um, and it, it has served us well, because right before school starts, it tends to be last-minute stuff that needs approved. And both meetings have been important. And it, it appears that the suggestion this year is that we don't do that. Um, and I would highly recommend we reconsider that and not just have one meeting on the twelfth. Because before school opens, there's going to be a whole boatload of stuff that is going to get. because before school opens, there's gonna be a whole boatload of stuff that is gonna get on our plate.
Um, can I throw out one other thing? I mean, obviously, I'm not gonna be here, but I think to put the goals workshop-
Yes, you are, every meeting.
So late in August. I mean, I'd actually been planning to, I usually would attend the goals workshop even before I got on the board. Um, so to push that to the end of August, it's awfully late to be setting goals. And then I think one of the things that this board, um, has sort of always said, oh, let's do better, is kind of being more ahead of it. And rather than having that crunch, remember how many times, last couple of years, we've been in October, November, getting committees, et cetera, up to date. So I would say, I would push that goals meeting early in July. I know you're going away, honey, but, um-
In the past, it's always been the same week as the reorg, just the second night of that same week. Because you want the summer to be developing that. I agree, that was a good catch.
Any other discussion?
Well, if we, if we are gonna consider that, then that would be something we should really talk about now, because on the second, it's gonna be too late to say it should be that, I mean, historically, it's been that week so that we can have the summer. Um, I've never seen a goals workshop be at the end of August. It seems like that's six weeks too late.
Do you wanna talk about the goals meeting that's met in August? Isn't that part of the-
Well, um, I'm fine with it being in early August, um, but we've always, at least I'm speaking for the administrators, we've always felt like we didn't have any time to reflect, like just no time to reflect. It's like, boof, you're in the reorg meeting and then you're kind of jump, jumping right in. And there's just been no time for rest or reflection. Because we are having graduation on the twenty-ninth, twenty-ninth. And then that Tuesday, we're having the reorg meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I, I know that I'm going to be exhausted. I, I know that. Like, I'm just, I'm exhausted now, just getting ready for this, this meeting and the Ja, uh, Jen, uh, July second meeting. I don't know if I'm speaking for my fellow administrators, I think you're gonna be looking, I think you guys are gonna be tired.
Well, then could we have it, that it's still in the first half of July, but it's not that week, it's the week after?
Well, we can go back and look at the calendar, but I think there were some availability issues, which is why we have these.
I think we were losing, I think we're losing board members like flies. I think we were losing-
In July?
Yeah, I think so. I think we had a lot of-
I just think the end of the, that pushing it off to August is a, is a huge mistake.
Well, we'll revisit it and look at any available dates. But if anybody has any conflicts with travel in the summer, now would be the time to, uh, just let the district clerk know.
I would also just add regarding all the dates, I, I would just suggest that we keep them as kind of placeholders and for availability. But I would love to us to kind of revisit and look at how we can try to meet smarter. And so maybe we try to have kind of, especially during the winter months, rather than having, let's say, budget workshop for an hour and then having a meeting that ends at eleven P.M. Maybe we have, you know, in January, February, and March, maybe we're having one real board meeting per month, but the other allocated time is for a budget workshop. Um, or maybe, you know, I think technically right now, we're supposed to be having, I, I see the labels of our meetings are one business meeting, one educational meeting, but they all kind of seem to follow the, the same pattern. And I think we're getting into this situation like we have tonight with tons of things as action items, because there was information gathering last minute. And I feel like maybe if we were more disciplined about how we organize meetings and had maybe some more workshops and fewer business meetings, maybe we could take an approach where we were more disciplined. We set that agenda for that one meeting much sooner, have a cutoff date for questions, you know, maybe pilot that for a few meetings and see how it worked to see if there were kind of, if it was just a more efficient and, um, cleaner way to run some of those meetings.
I would agree with that. If we can get information earlier and not have it be last minute, I think that would be productive and meetings would go a lot quicker and people could review those.
Yeah.
Well, and we can, a lot of districts still calendarize certain topics way ahead of time. It'll say, okay, we're gonna have a presentation on our foreign language program and that's gonna be the, the first meeting in May. And so there's, you, you can kind of calendarize things that you want covered over the year and that helps with at least planning for part of it, right?
Yep. No, and I, I started, when I was thinking about this, I started looking up different districts about what they do. Um, and many of them have two meetings per month, just like we do. But some seem to have one business meeting per month and then one is either a workshop or a work session.
Mm-hmm.
And I just think maybe if we, if we could think about piloting it, maybe it would make everyone's lives easier.
And the work sessions, because I've had those in former districts, you don't have to have a quorum. And you, it can be just like what-
Right.
You could, like, Brian's missing history. Like, there's, the new board, Yorgis, might be missing history on things. So you can ask those relevant questions to be brought to speed on history for work sessions. And doesn't require that, and then you can also have interchange with community who might have questions as well. So it's called a work session. And you don't, you don't vote, you don't do any of that, but you just have, you just, you build towards your next board meeting.
Any other discussion? All right, um, public input two. Is there anybody here for public input two?
I wanna get to very patient, patient young men.
And both Pearson graduates?
Yes.
I am. Victoria, can you put the, um-
We don't have a microphone, but we have a couple of printouts.
Yeah, we got some printouts here. Yeah, this is Nico McMahon. I'm Drew Harvey. We're, uh, we're both Pearson alum here. Um, we're just, uh, we'd like to present a little project. Not sure what we're passing out here. So last summer, Payne Dwight, he's a friend of mine from California, we bicycled from San Diego, California to Sag Harbor, right here, man, that Sag Main Beach. And we were trying to raise awareness in the fight against opioid abuse. So like thirty-three hundred miles and we raised over six thousand dollars, which we split between two causes that were very dear to us. Half of the proceeds went to an Anthony Grasso Foundation. He was someone that passed away at my college, University of San Diego, due to an opioid overdose. And the other half, uh, we wanted to use to build a Mike Semkus Memorial Workout Station in Sag Harbor, uh, especially to be put at Pearson Middle High School, where we see that it would be best utilized, uh, for the community. Mike Semkus was a Pearson athlete. He was a lieutenant at Sag Main Beach. He was the head of the local junior lifeguard program. He was the Pearson soccer coach and a substitute teacher at the Pearson Elementary School at the time of his death. He was also the son of Maria Semkus, who was a teacher of thirty years in Sag Harbor School District. Mike is a guy who devoted his life to giving back to the local community, from which he came and was a man who tragically succumbed to the opioid epidemic that crippled Suffolk County and the United States alike. Tragedies like this cannot be swept under the rug. Rather, they must be brought into the light for each preceding generation to learn from. We have to increase awareness and knowledge of the harmful effects that opioids and other drugs can have on individuals and just how insidious these vices can be. So we need this to be in a way that resonates with the youth and all, the youths and all individuals alike. Again, why we'd like it to be at the Pearson Middle High School. So by doing so, we can create an environment that inspires individuals towards wanting to lead a healthy and fit lifestyle, something that takes a more lasting effect when it's still at young ages in a learning environment. So the project is pretty much three polar bars, pretty basic, that are linked together at different heights, so different, um, kids of different heights can utilize them. And a set of parallel bars for doing dips and other workouts. Um, and then a plaque that reads, "A Loving Memory of Mike Semkus." And in the ambition section, which was something that the Pearson High School used to do in their yearbook, this is a direct quote, "To be a positive role model, have a loving family, and affect people the way that I have been affected by the people I love, to be remembered." And then we would end it with, "From all of us you have affected, we will always remember you." So as our hope, this memorial will not only inspire each preceding generation towards leading a life of fitness, but to also encourage the youth of this community to pursue their ambitions. Likewise, it can be used, it can be used as a teaching tool to highlight the very real dangers of addiction and drug abuse. This is an opportunity for Sag Harbor School to not take a backseat to this rampant opioid epidemic in our East End community, but to be a leader in this fight and for the local community. So if you just look at this second page, um, all these materials have been purchased with the funds donated. Um, most of those funds came from locals in the community during our bike trip. Uh, the plaque's been made. The rock has also been donated by Lou down at East Hampton Masonry. Um, we have the description there. Uh, something at the facilities manager would obviously have to take a look at and see, uh, where it could properly fit and, and be spaced at the school. We could easily get local volunteers, boy scouts, local lifeguards to help with the installation of the project and helping the maintenance. Something that the IB could also use as a cast project moving forward. I myself was, uh, the first IB class to graduate. I remember trying to figure out my cast hours when I was here. You know, pretty basic project that could be used, um, you know, to help kids get those hundred fifty hours, I don't know if it's still a hundred fifty hours, that's what it was. Um, thank you. Yeah. And we'd like to see what, what you guys would like to discuss. Um, obviously, I'm seeing that to be put to a vote. We've gone through some avenues with the school. Um, and just, you know, we know how it gets when you're going through certain avenues. A lot of red tape bureaucracy. So we'd like to put it to the people that actually make the decision, which is the school board. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
You just sit down.
Well done. Yeah, thank you for that. Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, could we, we'll put that on a future agenda.
Thank you.
I do wanna add that, um, our governor's done a lot of work, um, he's trying to recognize Sag Harbor on reverse the stigma. It's a statewide initiative that we no longer stigmatize people that have, um, become addicted to opioids or have passed because of opioids, because they have now identified that this really was something that was put upon us from, um, from some work that was done by big companies to make a lot of money. They were literally, you know, prescribing, over-prescribing opioids. And, um, you know, now that we've really identified that, um, especially young athletes, when they would get a, you know, a sprain or have a, a operation, they would over-prescribe the opioids. And so they really need to reverse that stigmatizing of people that really should have gotten the help they needed. Um, and so, um, you know, our, our governor and the work that Kim Lautwe's been doing across the state, um, and I went to one of the presentations on reversing the stigma, um, that we'd be very aware of, because if we stigmatize opioids, um, people won't get the help they need when really this was a commercial production of, of prescribing. It's white, non-class children, young adults that have been so hurt by opioids because they were inappropriately prescribed. So, anyway.
Can we get on in the summer, so that if, if, if there's traction to be had sooner versus later?
Let's figure out if that's something that we can happen, Paul?
And we'll need to hear-
Yes.
Can we have a little discussion about it now? Uh, move ahead.
Well, I, I just think, I wanna thank you. I think this is a wonderful idea, um, and, uh, uh, you know, I think it'd be very meaningful to the community. Um, I also love the concept, uh, this actually, you know, when we were all talking about the bonds and the fields, I don't know if you recall how many times I said, how about a parkour? How about a parkour that would connect the two, uh, uh, schools? And in fact, the architect from the old architectural firm frankly mocked me about, you know, what's a parkour? It's like, well, these are the kinds of things that are in a parkour and you could even con, connect the two campuses. It's a great workout piece and each item is different. It's a different obstacle where you do push-ups or pull-ups or sit-ups or whatever it is. So I think this is so fabulous and, um, I mean, if there's any way that we can move to approve it now, I would, I would move for that and be all for it.
Um, I think we need to put it through the channels and put it on agenda. I know you wanna-
They red tape, they want red tape.
You will have to know, thank you.
Trying to cut through the red tape for you, but I guess it's up to you. Well, I, I would imagine that whatever equipment's installed, there are kind of legal requirements, because we're a public school.
There is, there's a lot, there's codes that have to be looked at.
Right.
You can't just put it down.
Right. And I think this is wonderful and the work you did. And by the way, great writing. This IB program pays off, because you're a really good writer. But anyway, um, so I, personally, I think this is a great idea and we would wanna proceed in a way that it's legal, so that when it gets put up, it can stay up and kids can use it. So, but I would, I would love to fast-track it if we can.
Yeah. Anything else?
Also to mention, we have architects on board, ready to go, so that would not be needed to source anyone, anyway.
Perfect.
Need Dave work.
I mean, I don't know if I'd ask, but could we get a, a timeline of when that would take place? Would it happen in the next board meeting?
Um, yeah, probably not the next board meeting, because that one's a big one. Um, why don't you stick around after and we'll make sure we have your contact information, so that we can stay in touch.
I, I, I can, you guys have the timelines.
It's on.
I can, I have it.
It's here, okay.
I can follow you again.
Okay. Yeah, I, we can't give you a date like tonight, because we have to look at the calendar.
I have to find, I have to find out from the state though, since it's a playground, that if I have to go through state approval, put this in first. And you're gonna have to get nicer approval. Yeah, it's a, there's a, there's a whole, because of all the insurances and requirements by the state as far as how this is installed, the concrete and what kind of a, a surface you're putting down, there's, there's, there's a few questions that you have to go through.
I, I sent it to our architects, too. They have it, they have it.
The next regular meeting we have after the reorg, at least right now, is August twelfth. So maybe we can say it the very latest, that'll be on the agenda, August twelfth, for an updated next steps. And in the interim, that gives almost a month to like, okay, here are all the things that have to get done. Does that make sense?
Okay.
I mean, I, I'd like to see, I, I hope we have another meeting in July and we can get it sooner.
So we would actually just, we have approval to put it up at Nash Ashken Park. We have other spaces to put it up and we'd like to see it go up, um, you know, as soon as possible. And I, I don't actually feel comfortable leaving here without, uh, a date that we could speak about it, because we're, we're actually just gonna, like, I'm just gonna put it bluntly, we're gonna put it up, um, within the next month. So it's been over a year, project. Uh, it's been months of speaking with various, uh, people at the school and it's kind of moved at a very, very slow pace. So then pushing it off to the end of the summer for it to possibly be not approved, we just don't feel comfortable doing that.
So I, I think everybody really appreciates you guys coming and was really moved by everything that you spoke and appreciates the anxiousness as well, but we have legal requirements that we have to follow before we can do something. We're just gonna make sure that we do that. I think everyone here wants to do this as quickly as possible.
Unfortunately, if somebody should get hurt on it, then we have to answer, who put it in? How was it put in? You know, there's, there's a lot of our responsibility with the-
I mean, the board's just hearing about this?
Right, right.
And, and I think, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but for everyone who has spoken, we're excited about this. I'd love to see it here. I think it's very meaningful. I mean, he graduated, Michael graduated from this school. He was a substitute teacher. He was a coach here. His mom was a teacher here and spent her career here. So I think that it's meaningful to have here. We just have to find, we have, there may be a legal process that we are required to go through and we can't not go through it, so.
And I do think that there'd be board members that would be willing to get together and have a quorum to pass this if, if the next meeting that we're, is down the road. So we just need, we just need time to circle that to our people and we'll let you know.
I did, I did share this with the board a few weeks ago and that's when I sent it out to the, the architects. So, yeah.
I'm sorry that we can't give you a date tonight, but we, um, let us get back to you in a couple of days.
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, can I get a motion to convene to executive session to, um-
Well, I, I thought we were gonna start with unfinished business, or could, could I say two seconds and talk?
Sure.
I just wanted to close up. Um, I, I just wanted to thank you all and thank the community, um, for this opportunity and thank the administrators, who I am just in awe of, all of you. Um, I, I, you know, I, I wanted to join this, because I felt like so much of the board is budgets and contracts and red tape. And, uh, and I too had hoped that we could try to cut through a little bit of that with the grass and later start. And I've, I'm so appreciative of all my fellow board members who helped with all of those things. I also wanna thank all the past board members and the, those members of the community who've been so engaged and trying to keep us honest. And I just think it's cool and vibrant. And, uh, I just hope that as we move forward, I, I'm very excited about this board and the future board member who's gonna be sitting here. Um, and, uh, that, I know you guys all really doing your best to keep, uh, what's best for the kids, uh, first and foremost. And so, um, I just wanna thank you all for that, 'cause I think this is a thankless job. And, um, particularly the two of you, uh, in the leadership and our veteran who's been here longer than anybody and keeps us all, uh, informed in a way I think nobody else can, so it's so valuable. And the new members who are all bringing such important perspective, um, uh, and just make it a pleasure to serve. So, um, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to convene to executive session to meet with school council and discuss various other things?
Sure.
All those in favor?